Roll call, please.
Roja?
Here.
Sorry, Roja. Donahue?
Here.
Bataglia?
Here.
Mangela Bitner?
Here.
Sterns?
Here. If you're able, please stand for a pleasure.
Promote me.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Katie, how about nervous, please?
The public hearing and meeting were advertised at the Meadville Tribune on November 4th and November 8th of 2019.
Andy, do we have anybody signed up that would like to speak?
We are. Christopher Brody of 334 Moore Street, but I think Chris actually intends to speak at the regular meeting.
Correct.
He'll come back, he's here earlier, so George Stabile, 998 Catherton Street is here providing.
Hi, George. If you want to go ahead and come up to the speaker, give us your name and address and...
Stand over here.
Yeah, please.
George Stabile, 998 Catherton Street. I read in the paper recently about the rolling of the dice of using investments to cover our pensions, playing the stock market. I believe that's what I read. I believe Andy started out saying, "Publician, do this," and escalated about three times to like, "Just don't do this." I'm not an expert, but I'm fallen in with Andy. I'd rather, you know, find another way. And there's, I'm sure, there's a lot of people who've looked for other ways, and there are a lot of other ways, I'm sure. I'm not saying it would be easy, I just don't want to roll the dice. And can I actually suggest another way at this point?
Sure.
Okay. There wasn't much time when I decided I wanted to come and say something, but I had yesterday. So I had a list of organizations in town that likely care about Meadville. So I had about eight people. A lot of them were nonprofits, but I had about eight organizations. I made it to two of them yesterday, and I would say I was batting 500 on, hey, organization, will you step up monetarily? Not that they haven't already, many of these organizations have already, but maybe even more so for the city. We're all interested in the city, will you step up? I went to two places. One was fairly depressing, one was very optimistic. And I would personally continue to do that kind of work, happy to, you know, and I think that many people may be, in order that maybe we could not have to roll the dice.
George, just to give you an idea, what you're talking about is a great idea. I think anytime that the community, that our taxpayers in the city of Meadville, that would go to the nonprofits and encourage them, I mean, there's no law saying they have to make a contribution. But so, there's just a little bit of history, so you know. Nancy and John, Christopher Soff, former mayor, was on a committee that actually went around and met with the nonprofits. You met with both of them, did you not? And worked together. So it's been done in the past, but it's always great to go back and remind them. You know, they don't realize that a pile costs quite a bit of money to remove snow, so their clients or their...
I think what we found is that they did realize that, but some of the churches were holding on by the skin of their teeth, and they didn't have the money to give. So in fact, the nonprofits that could give did give, but the others were not able to.
I couldn't remember the list. You guys had a list of this, right?
Didn't we have some kind of thing last year or two, Leroy, or a year or two ago? Remember you met with, I remember you told us you met with a bunch of people and...
Yeah, we met with our 35 group, what I call 35.
That wasn't on...
But that wasn't specifically on contributions. It was just what they saw that we could move Meadville to. But thank you, George.
I'm not done now. I am aware that people have gone.
Oh, okay.
And I appreciate that. I want to go again. And I want to keep bumping on the door, you know? I think we might take example from the people that are my children's age. They're figuring it out. They're figuring a way to make a living, even with huge college loans, that people of my generation really didn't have. They're finding different ways to fly this, you know, their economics. And I think that's where we're at here. I think that, you know, we want to fly this town, not, it's hard to make ends meet, you know, and we've got that problem of making ends meet. So we've got to do that, but we want to go even beyond that, to where we make ends meet, but we also shine. Okay? And I think, I think we really need to knock, you know, need to get out there. I think people were willing and ready to do that, not that people haven't in the past. Maybe more people. And like I say, I was batting 500 yesterday. One organization who wanted to remain anonymous, because this is way early, I hardly knew what I was talking about. They were very positive. Yes, we're already thinking in those directions. And then one was like, very, hey, we're strapped. But the final thing I will say, I think there's a lot of these organizations, a lot of people that care. If you get out there and find them all and really sink in with them. They're sinking with us, they're with us, they're in this town, you know? And it's important that we shine. There's so many that maybe that number could be lower for everybody and maybe doable. And there's other things too, you know, there's taxes, there's staff, there's a lot of things to look at. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is looking at these, well, in a broad stroke, nonprofits, but some of these people that are on my list aren't nonprofits, just people that care, you know, that ought to or do care about this city.
All right, thank you, George.
Certainly.
If there isn't anyone else that's signed up, I'm going to go ahead and ask for an adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Yeah, second? I'm sorry. I can't hear out my right ears.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call.
Roja?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Call order, Katie. Roll call.
Roja?
Here.
Donahue?
Here.
Bataglia?
Here.
Mangela Bitner?
Here.
Sterns?
Here. Meeting notices?
On October 16th, 2019, executive session was held to discuss personnel. On November 6th, 2019, executive session was held to discuss real estate. On November 13th, 2019, executive session was held to discuss real estate. And on November 20th, prior to the meeting, executive session was held to discuss possible litigation.
Motion to accept the minutes, please.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Before you accept November 6th, 2019 minutes, the term listed for Scott Schellander was incorrect. It should be January 1st of 2024, not 2022. That will need corrected in minutes.
Okay, but it's corrected on the...
On the appointment sheet.
On the appointment sheet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. With those corrections, motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Any other discussion on it? Roll call.
Roja?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Before I go any further, I have to explain why I'm wearing the Oil City hat and jersey. I guess these are called...
Says extra, extra large on that jersey, too.
That's hiding a six-pack underneath there. There is a six-pack, but you've got to go kind of deep with it. So the mayor of Oil City, I guess it was the radio station or TV station in Tennesseville contacted me, and they asked if we'd like to make a little wager. Now, you all know that I am not a sports individual other than golf. So we thought it would be fun, so the deal was whoever won, Sean, you're going to have to help me with this?
You got it. Oil City beat us nine to seven. It was a District 10 championship game.
So since Oil City won, I have to wear their jersey and their hat. And it actually looks like I kind of played in it, if you want to know the truth. But it was a friendly competition between the two mayors and the two cities, so I will be wearing this all evening. So that's why you see this. So with that being done, Andy, do we, we do have somebody signed up?
Yeah, Mr. Brody.
Is he in?
He's not in the audience now, but I suspect he might show up at some point in the meeting. I'm interested in talking about the sidewalk removal discussion under new business.
Okay. Katie, communications, please.
Counsel, I have a letter...
I guess, is there anyone else that didn't sign up that wants to speak during? I don't think so, sorry.
I have a letter dated November 7th, 2019, from R. Charles Thomas. Dear Mayor Sterns, I tender my resignation as a member of the Meadville zoning hearing board with this letter. I have indicated in the resignation itself that I have made it effective immediately by all reason of the fact that it is necessary that potential candidates for appointment to the zoning hearing board be contacted and interviewed as soon as time permits. Had I deferred my date of resignation to December 31st, it would have created a problem in connection with the appointment of a new member. I appreciate the opportunity that I have had over the years to serve on the zoning hearing board, and hopefully I've provided some guidance to other members of the board with whom I have served. I want you to know that the present board are all knowledgeable and very attentive to the duties imposed upon them as a member of the zoning hearing board. Mr. Gary Johnson is an asset to the city of Meadville in his position as zoning officer and other positions that he holds at the present time. He addresses the applications of persons needing a variance or special exception complaint and schedules hearings as soon as they can be scheduled in accordance with the law of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I believe that Gary has the ability and motivation to become a city manager in the future. Best wishes. With best wishes, I remain, R. Charles Thomas.
It was a very nice handwritten letter.
I move to accept with regret.
Now, I need a second?
Second.
Second. R. Charles has done an awful lot for our community.
Yes, he has.
Not only for our community, but for communities surrounding us.
How long has he served there?
Since 1971.
Wow.
Still trying to figure out how long you've been chair.
That's like 50 years ago.
It's a long time.
Yeah.
The time I went, I was always impressed. Very sharp, thinking of a lot of good things to say.
You know, I...
R. Charles gave a lot to our community, and not only as an attorney for the, or an attorney, but as a neighbor also. You know, I'm going to wish him well and enjoy your retirement and have a lot of fun.
Those guys, they like their own chair, or...
I believe they like their own chair, yes. Nancy, I know he's your neighbor, do you have anything you'd like to say?
He's a wonderful man. I enjoy feeding him and spending time with him, and he hasn't stopped working for the community. I don't think he ever will. I think he will work for the community until the day he dies. Somebody like him is just few and far between.
He has a brilliant mind.
Yes.
And a great sense of humor.
Yes. John?
I always enjoyed him, he's just, like you said, he doesn't put sense into humor. Why ruins a knowledge on everything?
Sean?
I mean, don't miss me every week.
Well, we thank you again for all of his time and effort. Roll call, please.
Roja?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Andy, managers' report?
Your Honor, we've got quite a bit of territory to cover this evening. First on a series of presentations, but first here with us is Mark Kilburn from DJB Group, which is our insurance broker. We had talked, this is really related to budget discussions, but our annual plan renewal happens in December. And obviously, Mark sharpens his pencil every year, and we look at options every year, but this year in particular, given the budget situation that we're in, we went to Mark and asked him to evaluate a number of options. And really with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mark to handle from here. But in front of you then is a color-coded, is a table that says City of Meadville, January 2020 medical. And Mark will walk through that chart with you and discuss the recommendations. Mark?
If I could forget, I think I did last time, to say thank you guys for your confidence in business over the years. I've been brokering the city since 2007, and it's been a great partnership. I want, there's three pieces here to talk about. The main one is obviously the spreadsheet with the numbers. And if you will allow me to just kind of walk through, I will try to just dance on top of it, and we'll drill down where you guys want me to. But I think if I get done, you're going to kind of understand the story that this thing tells. It's a tool that will hopefully deliver some good news for us right now. In 2007, we left UPMC Health Plan for Highmark, and believe it or not, Highmark took us at a very inopportune time as we were going through a number of claim issues, which, claim issues in a group this size, you guys go, some people say a three-year cycle, a five-year cycle. We actually had a very, very good cycle. We had about 10 years where, I'll just tell you, we were very, very profitable for Highmark. The last three years, not so much. Why we were protected is they offered us caps. The reason they had offered caps, you can see it done the same things, because they were in the middle of that big fight, the network fight, as you can imagine. So brokers like caps and we hate caps, because we want everyone to take a cap, we want to know that that cap protects us. And we always say to our groups, those caps have to come to an end sooner or later, and that's when the rubber hits the road, if especially you're in a high claims time, which we are in right now. So this year, the second year of the cap, it was supposed to be an 8% cap, 6% last year, 8% this year, not including taxes and fees. Last year, we negotiated to a 6 exactly. This year, committed about 11.14 because they added the taxes and fees. There are a number of negotiating tactics that we use, and I used them all this time. But what we did was we went to UPMC, who has been making overtures to our group the last couple, three years. There wasn't enough, there wasn't enough there to leave, especially in the middle of the caps. And part of the negotiation with these two carriers, which we are, by the way, very close to both of them, we know the management way up, and I use those relationships. You don't want to always throw one at the other all the time. You've got to kind of massage it and make sure feelings aren't hurt. And I just want to make sure you guys know, when we're done, that both carriers respect the way that this was negotiated, open and honestly. We got the quote from UPMC, as you're going to see. It was, the original quote was about the same amount as we're paying this year, so obviously about 11% low. We knew we were in these three claim situations, and there's other ones, you guys, but there's three that we all knew about. And I would never, as a broker, dump... UPMC doesn't ask about claims. In other words, we don't, at the size of the group we are, we don't get detailed claims data to give to other carriers when we're negotiating. That's can be a good thing and a bad thing. So in this situation, what I would never want to do is throw the group at UPMC, and they find out that we've got three or four claims that are percolating and we didn't tell them. So what we decided to do was go to UPMC management and say, I want to make sure you know these are there, and if you guys need to modify your claims. And they came back and said, those claims are fine. We're okay with the claims, your numbers are good. Okay? So at that point, you know what I do next? I go back to Highmark. And Highmark, again, nicely and professionally balked this year. They said, that's enough, we can't go any lower, because of the, what they're telling us is losses of $650 million in the last three years. My opinion is it's not $650 million, it doesn't matter, but my opinion is they didn't want to come back down. Okay? So immediately, and I call Andy and Debbie quite frequently and say, can I run up right now through these negotiations? Can I say this? Do you want me to do this? How do you want me to handle this? They kind of lead me to do the bidding for you guys. And really, what we came back with was, and I will make sense of this, I promise, if you will just follow in the left column, you will see our current plan with Highmark and our current individual, parent-child, husband and wife, and family rates. You will also see the census of how many people are in each one of those categories. It takes us down to a monthly total. It takes us down to an annual premium. And then, of course, the benefits are all laid out below, so that when we're analyzing these plans, we can make a decision on better or worse benefits. If you go all the way to the bottom, because we are going to talk about network for a second, whether you remember this or not, last July, we were going to lose Hammett regardless, because we were with Highmark, okay? And because we're in Community Blue Flex Plan, which has kind of morphed into a Community Blue Legacy Plan, which no one needs to worry about, we do not have Hammett right now, and will not have Hammett, nor the Pittsburgh Six Hospitals, Cressby Shady Side East, Posta Vine, I always miss one, McGee, okay? We do have St. Vincent now, we do have Cleveland Clinic now, and we do have a national network. Okay? The parts that are in yellow, I want you to know, and this is important, are the parts that we, we make the employees whole back to a column, which I'll show you in a second. So what Amber does, they bring in their EOBs, we pay the deductible, as you guys know, and there's certain co-pays that the plan we have now didn't match up to, and those are the urgent care, the emergency room, and the drug plan, that we make the employees whole back on those areas, okay? So you'll see in the second column is our renewal, when the renewal rates, monthly total, yearly total, and the $108,000. And I know you guys, I saw the 556 in the paper. I get what you're going through right now. Well, I don't get it. I don't know how you guys do it, but I hope by the end of my presentation, we'll take a little bit of pressure off that pot.
So Counsel, the second column is what we budgeted for in the proposed...
Oh, good point. When Debbie, Debbie would call me and say, is that the best we're going to do? Is that the best you've got? And at the time, I said, you better put the 11.1 in, because that's all I have in my pocket right now, at the time. Okay? So that's what she put in. So when you guys are looking at the 656, that's with that included. Okay. I'm going to just go real quickly. The third column is, we asked UPMC to match exactly the plan you have now benefit-wise down below and give us rates for it, and you'll see that it's $9,000 less than last year and $117,000 less than the renewal. The fourth column over is if we got rid of having Amber to make those contributions back to the employees. So I simply asked, and watch this, you guys, if you're following me down, the urgent care's 50, the emergency room's 50, and the drug plan right now that the employees have is at 10, 20, 40. So believe it or not, you're going to laugh, that was the plan that was in place with UPMC when we moved, and they were not, at the time, in negotiation with the union, so we just said, we'll make you whole back to that plan. And we've been doing that now for 13 years. Okay? So that really is an old UPMC plan, believe it or not, right there. Okay? Very little difference in monies, but still $1,000 difference. So we, at that point, I'd say, I'd say Amber needs to continue to reimburse our employees, right, for $1,000. So watch this. The plan that's on the right is a, what we call a standard plan. So UPMC takes it off a shelf, and because they take it off a shelf, it's more efficient for them. And so they give us rates for that plan. So look at the monthly total, look at the yearly total. I don't know, we hide Frances Kennedy, who's really helped me wonderfully with these spreadsheets. She's marvelous. So anything in green is good for us, and anything that's red is bad for us. So we put difference versus current, which is a minus $48,000 versus current premium, and $156,700 versus renewal premium. Now, the plan is basically the same. I'm going to show you the differences, and I want to just follow it down. The reason there's slashes is because this is a inside advantage plan with UPMC. It is a steering plan to their network, very similar to the Community Blue Flex Plan that we are in now. So for the last how many years did we steer people away from Hammett and to St. Vincent? This plan does exactly the opposite. UPMC owns Hammett. Okay? So we have a $2,500 deductible, same as we have now, $5,000. And the reason they're involved is because I'm going to tell you that we're going to do employee meetings with everybody, hand them these wonderful packages that we make, and say, you're not going to St. Vincent unless you want, you can go to St. Vincent, but it's going to be the rate column, the higher deductible and the co-insurance. So now, listen to this, this is even better. You can actually use your St. Vincent doctors, because the Flex, or the Inside Advantage Plan is simply a facility steering plan, not a provider steering plan. So you can go to your doctor of Vincent, but if you need something taken off your arm, you're going to get admitted, obviously, you're going to go to UPMC facility for less money. You still have a choice, if you want to, to go, to continue to go to St. Vincent. You're just going to pay more. The city, right now, the way they reimburse the employees on the deductible is, they get $2,500 back for an individual, $5,000 back for a family. It doesn't matter where they go. So the employee still has choice, and they're still going to get the same reimbursement from the city. There could be a little bit more cost for them on the backend if they choose St. Vincent, but again, I don't want to make an issue out of this, because we're in these steering plans, because we're still getting rated on our experience. What does Highmark do? They can pay claims cheaper and run their programs better, more efficiently in their hospitals. UPMC is exactly the same thing. So we want now our members to go to UPMC hospitals. How's that? That's just a flip-flop, isn't it? From one steering plan to another? But when I brought this to these guys initially and said, I have $117,000, that was before we got to the 156, are you interested in listening to it? They, of course, said yes. I believe they brought it to you guys tacitly. We do have a call into the task forces that we couldn't get together. We were trying to get to the task force before today, because we don't want them to hear it on TV, and like, what are you guys doing? So we did make some...
And the task force has to remind Counsel, so we have essentially two members from each union that we, the contract calls for a task force to meet to discuss union benefits. Benefits are negotiable, right? They're bargainable. And so we've had great relationships with the unions as we've made these changes in the past. But that's the task force, what Mark talks about, it's a task force of city employees to review this and represent their unions.
We've always kept a real open communication with them. It's funny, because when big things like this come up, the task, there's a lot of people on task force meetings, but the last couple of years, when we were staying put and everything's kind of rolling good, there hasn't been a lot of, a lot of interest in coming to the meetings. So that being said, so the benefits, if we'll just real quickly, that I'm going to say, and yellow again on that right column are the benefits that we will now have to, if we choose this plan, which I'm going to recommend that we do, that we are going to have to reimburse our employees back the difference from. And you'll simply see that the co-pay at the specialist is 20 versus 10. So if they want to bring their paper in to say their EOB and said they went to a primary care physician, they're saying you'll reimburse them $10. And you can see right down the line on the yellow, those would be the areas that we must reimburse. Now, we don't do this willy-nilly. If you'll go down to, in the very bottom, on the white parts, if you'll follow me for real quick. I put MRP there, that is called medical reimbursement. As you guys know, we reimburse our employees for the deductible and co-pays. So I asked Amber to run the reports of our deductible and co-pay contributions over the last five years. We averaged them, and so we came up with $126,000 on deductibles, and that goes right across, no matter what plan we're in. The co-pays, the co-pay reimbursements, emergency room, urgent care, has come down to $2,700. So now, watch this. Obviously, we're going to, that number is probably going to go up. But let's just say it goes to $6,000. Let's say the worst-case scenario, it goes to $10,000, which, by the way, is not going to come near that. We still have $156,710 in our pocket by going to this UPMC, this particular UPMC plan to reimburse those. So we are way ahead. Okay? Now, I want to say, again, I will, you guys can jump in whenever you want, and we'll go back to the grids. I want to talk about the network a little bit. I want to talk about, and I'll do this all quickly, I promise. I want to talk about some of the added values that UPMC is going to, that does offer, that our employees are going to enjoy, and talk about this. This is, this is most important. We have to know, and this is something our agency focuses on, doing once a year renewals is the easy part sometimes. The four, or five, six years down the road is the harder part. And I always try to give our groups a vision for the future of where this thing's going to go, how this thing's going to go for us, because I'm going to tell you, costs are not going to continue to go down. Costs are going to continue to go up, because claims are going to go up, because trend, medical trend, insurance, or just the inflation rate is going to go up. Technology continues to advance, and there's more and more things out there that we all want. And certainly, RX, which is specialty drugs that are, and I always tell people, Humira's the one you see advertised everywhere. There's a ton more of these injectables that are literally tens of thousands of dollars a month. Humira's $3,000 a shot, and I think people get Humira twice a week. So I mean, I have groups, you guys, with people that are on meds that are $40,000, $50,000 a month. So imagine what that could do to a plan like this, okay? So I'm going to just make a little plug for the future. I'm going to still be, I'm still thinking that you guys ought to explore the Pennsylvania Municipal Insurance Cooperative in the future, which would take years like this and give you money back. It would take years where we had high claims and protect you. I think long-term, we're going to help control this, so we don't have... I think long-term, we're going to help control this so we don't have these, okay? So you've all heard me talk about that, well, not everybody. But I do think that getting into a consortium where there are shared risks and there's protections built in is something that we wanna keep our eye on. We actually talked about it this year again, but listen to this, because of our claims, they don't wanna take you in this year. They don't wanna take your group in, you know, they wanna protect that pool. Once you're in, you're fine. So I just, that's my little plug for the future, that I still think we wanna have that on our horizon. I do not have a cap from UPMC for next year. I will say this about UPMC, they're extremely fair, they're extremely consistent. I called my friend Kiki, somebody may have heard his name before, he was the managing rep back in the day. He's been with UPMC since I think they started the health plan. I asked that he be our client manager, and he agreed. So I will have another great year moving forward with not only getting things fixed for our employees, navigating the system for you folks who are on the plan, but helping with those renewals and understanding what we're going through. They don't get grips, you guys, to get rid of them. They don't convince them, buy your business to hit you next year. And I'm not saying that's not gonna happen if we get, have a really, really bad claims year, but that's not what we're going into this relationship for. Does that make sense? So it's hard to ignore $156,000. I think that's why I'm standing here talking about UPMC right now. Okay? I gave you a little employee transition package and a little fun facts. We are very, I just want you guys to know, interestingly, I manage 57 separate groups. Right now, I have 36 in UPMC, and that probably has morphed over the last five years more than any time, simply because of their pricing, their aggressive pricing, and their consistency. They're not perfect by any stretch of imagination. In fact, what they did with the inside advantage in the ACA pool did not make me happy and did not make our clients happy, but this is an inside advantage that will continue to give you medical center at level one. Also, I want you guys to know, UPMC does have Cleveland Clinic now in network. They made that relationship when they knew that they were gonna lose Vincent for the folks up north, and I know that's important to people in Crawford County. So not only will they have the Centers of Excellence Hospitals of Presby and Shadyside, Hillman Cancer Center, and all those hospitals, but you will have Hammett Hospital and an alternative to go to Cleveland Clinic for second appointments, should you need it. Okay? Go back real quickly to the St. Vincent being in level two. I asked for a report on city usage at St. Vincent, and I was shocked to find out it's very low. Will there be one or two people who might be disrupted? There might be, the same as when we went to Hymark. We manage those disruptions, we help people get new doctors, we help people get through the system. If they are under current care, UPMC does have care management transitions, depending on the severity and the acuteness of the care. I don't want you to think, if you're diabetic, you're gonna keep your diabetes doctor because you're not. So there are transitions. So we're real good at transitioning people to UPMC right now, is I guess is what I'm trying to say. Okay? They've got all the bells and whistles, they've got 24/7 nurse lines, they've got virtual medicine where you can literally from your computer, have an appointment with a doctor, PCP specialist, dermatologist. They're very high on employee wellness without having it to be on a group platform. If an individual member wants to quit smoking, wants to help reduce stress or modify their diet, there are health coaches that UPMC will supply. They've got invested interest as payer and payee, just like Hymark, of keeping our employees as healthy as possible. Okay? Pharmacy transition as well. I have very little disruption when I move a group from Hymark to UPMC, but in these kits, if somebody wants to give me their drug, I'll be able to look at where it's gonna fall and if their doctor needs to make some adjustments to that. We do have the same ability as we do with Hymark to do a non-formulary appeal. Again, I'm giving you guys the backroom stuff that we do to help people, but I just want you to have the confidence to know that, you know, I know we've gotta balance budgets, but we've also gotta have employee benefit plan that attracts and retains employees. That's my job, is to make those two things happen. So I want you to know, I'm not deaf to, because I get the calls from employees, so believe me, I wanna make sure that they're taking. Well, Debbie and Amber get them first, and then I get them.
Mark, can I interrupt you for a second while it's on my mind?
Absolutely.
With Hymark, we have the ability with Allegheny Network out of Erie. Is that gonna be also with you?
It's a great question. Allegheny General, AGH, AGH in Pittsburgh will not be in your network. St. Vincent's will, but Your Honor, remember something, you're gonna pay more to go there. So your deductible is gonna be twice as much, you're actually gonna have co-insurance behind that deductible of 30%. So what I would recommend, if you have physicians that you love, who can continue to go to them for the same co-pays, okay? But if you need facility care, tests, procedures, that you're gonna say, "I need to go to either Hammett or to Meadville or to Cleveland Clinic," or, you know, "I need to go," or to Pittsburgh. Okay? So remember, this is a facility steer. So I don't want you to, AGH is not in our network. St. Vincent's portion is. Okay?
All right. Now, I'm not real smart with all this.
Take your time. I mean, neither am I.
If you go through, and I'm going back in history with me, when I had my surgeries done, and I was recuperating for those six months, I had, Allegheny came to my home.
Sure.
And so I knew I had that with Hymark.
Sure.
Do I still have that same option? I mean, is it under the UPMC?
Absolutely. UPMC is a phenomenal, phenomenal health insurance plan. And again, I compare benefits here, you guys, I don't put skilled nursing in there. Skilled nursing is always a component of a great health plan. I tell all my groups, "You're gonna have places that are gonna get you better, people that are gonna get you better." I wanna think about UPMC, and believe me, you guys, you know we love Hymark. We are a Hymark lead agency, but UPMC is a smaller company, and they have a little bit more ear to, if your UPMC doctor wants something for you, I could probably get it pretty much the time. So they're a little bit more acute listening because they're not so big. Now, Hymark is not so big that I can't talk to them. Someday, if we're talking about Aetna United, that'll be another story altogether. But yes, Your Honor, there's, all those elements of a great medical plan are in UPMC plan, so, yeah.
I just wanna make sure, not just for my, for any of our staff and employees.
Absolutely.
My next question is, Mark, this goes back a few years, I don't know, not to put you on the spot, but I remember we changed healthcare, and two years later, our premium went up 40%.
Right.
And that always bothered me, that we made that first move, at that time, I think Richard Friedberg was the mayor, but there was a large savings, but that savings really got ate up two years later when we got that 40% increase. And I don't know if that was on usage, because we had some employees that were in ill health, or what caused that, but that always concerned me when we start talking about changing insurance companies. You know, it may look good today, but what happens a few years from now?
We spent a lot of time talking about that, and here's how I can address that. Back in '07, '08, '09, we had a spike, there was no question. Hymark took us at the worst time possible, okay? And they've got actuaries that say, "We cannot continue to do business with this group." And they actually have caps, they can't give you more than an X, and so they might be taking a loss at you, with you even at that, okay? Could you find another carrier to go to? That's what they're saying at that point, okay? They stuck with us, we stuck with them. Our claims settled, and everything worked fine. We're now, I think we're a little bit ahead right now. We've got some claims, I'm not saying we're not gonna get another one tomorrow, I cannot predict that.
Sure.
I will tell you this, UPMC, as I'm gonna repeat, does not have a new business discount like a national carrier might. They're not buying your business. They're looking at these claims as best they could through my eyes, from what we know, and saying, "We think we can manage those claims okay, or we think they're coming to an end," or whatever. UPMC is really good at discounting in their own facilities. That's a tool they have. Hymark does it too. I think UPMC does, does it a little bit better. So, Your Honor, I tried to get a cap for next year. I thought that would really make it a lot easier for counsel to make this decision. I was unsuccessful, they were offering caps in 2019. Really what they told me is they can't do it in 2020, they would set a precedent by giving me one cap and everybody else hearing about it. But I did fight for it, I mean, I fought right to the top for it. So at that point, when Andy and Debbie and I get back together, you know, we asked the question, "Is it still worth it at $156,000?" You know, that's pretty much the situation we're in.
And Mark, one other question, and then counsel may have other ones. The national network, we have that now. So what, in the new plan, we don't have national network. What's the difference?
You're asking all the right questions. UPMC knows that they're not a national network, okay? They know they're not. First of all, if there's an emergency, you're hunting in Tennessee, or you got kids and you go to... We do have a national pharmacy network, right? We also have, there's a network that UPMC rents called PHCS MultiCare. You don't have access to it, except for their urgent cares in Florida. And so you can go online and look where the urgent care is on. You don't have access to it unless you had an Ohio zip code or a New York zip code or a West Virginia zip code, then we put you in that network and those people would be taken care of, okay? Two other things that I, that are, and again, you guys, we've put, again, I can't even tell you how much business we have with UPMC right now, and not just us, Arbor Upbridge, any other ones. UPMC is going to get you home. They have a product called Assist America, it is a concierge service, it's in the packet, I didn't give it to you, it will go to the employees, you're an employee, you'll get it. You actually get your own little card that says, this is, you're 100 miles away from our service area. Not only, it's not just a medical card, you lost your luggage, your card wrote down. They like to brag that they've helicoptered people off cruise ships and pulled people out in the woods. So they understand that, because they're not gonna fix your knee in Tennessee, they're gonna get you back here and fix your knee at Presby, right? So again, emergency services, anywhere, anywhere, are gonna be covered 100%, highest level of benefits. Even if you got, let's just, worst-case scenario, knock on wood, you had a terrible accident and you were helicoptered to a hospital, and you had to have emergency surgery, right? And you had to spend 10 days in ICU, you don't have to worry about that claim. Might, if you didn't have to go into ICU, might they wanted to transport you to an in-network hospital? They might, okay? But that's what these guys would do, they're very good at it. So that claim would be paid 100% if it was through the emergency room, okay? So again, they've got their Centers of Excellence in Pittsburgh, they are teaching hospitals, they've got Hammett, and they've got now access to Cleveland Clinic. And I'll tell you, it's, we have no issues with their network at all.
So if you're lifelighted from Meadville to Hammett?
Which is, which is the regional trauma center right now.
Correct. And then if you needed to be transferred again, which this has happened to many family members...
You are killing me.
Yeah, I know. And you're...
For some emergency, they will transport you.
To...
You can't take an ambulance ride to Pittsburgh just because you want to, you gotta call Aunt Thelma to take you down.
But they're gonna take you to Cleveland, not Pittsburgh, correct?
Oh, no, no. No, no.
Oh, then I misunderstood that.
No, no. Presby's their number one. You gotta ask to go to Cleveland.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
So you're automatically taken to Presby?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. They're gonna take you to their hospitals. That's where they want you.
I hope God none of us ever have to use that, but that's important.
Absolutely.
Did the task force approve it?
No, well, task force has not met yet. And that, essentially, if counsel said, "No, we're not interested," then there's no sense meeting with the task force, but that's where we're coming to you first, but they, that would be the next step to take it to the task force for approval before we could begin...
And I'm sure they're gonna have these same questions.
Absolutely. And just, again, I kinda said, my ace in the hole with those folks is, they were with UPMC prior to this, and back in the day, UPMC was associated with Vincent, and they didn't have Hammett. So that has flip-flopped in the 11 or 12 years since then, so... And I think another element of this is because the employees do pay a percentage of their contribution, that when they look at these rates, they'll be able to see it in their paycheck versus the renewal versus what their rate would be for their particular, you know, parent, child, or husband and wife. And usually, that is pretty compelling.
So is there a choice of pharmacy, or do they steer you to their own?
Not at all. Good question, Jim. Believe it or not, the pharmacy's about the same as what you have now. Walgreens is the only pharmacy that doesn't play ball with Hymark or UPMC, except for specialty drugs, then you have to go to Walgreens. But we always joke that if there's a Walgreens, you could throw a rock and hit three other pharmacies, and sure enough, in Meadville, you can. So you still have a national pharmacy network with all the big players. Now, you're not gonna go to the mom and pops if you're in Alabama or Tennessee, right? You're gonna go to CVS or Rite Aid or Walmart, right?
Yeah.
So you still have a national pharmacy network.
Okay, now, formulary and non-formulary drugs?
Okay, I have 124 pages of that. Do you want me to bring it in and review?
My understanding is that in some cases, something as formulary one year is removed, the next...
Yeah, Jim, with that right now. Same, Howard does the same thing.
And as far as places like Cleveland Clinic, you're saying that if someone has a relationship, they would still try to send it to Presby instead of Cleveland?
Absolutely not. If you want to go to Cleveland, you'd go to Cleveland.
Okay, but is the standard or enhanced coverage?
There is no standard or enhanced, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the only one you guys, only one that's in that level two is St. Vincent's, I apologize.
Okay, and that means standard coverage or enhanced coverage?
Enhanced. There's no enhanced, they don't use, they use level one or level two, but level one. That would be, Cleveland Clinic is level one.
Okay.
Passes Meadville members.
You're gonna be giving us a package, I'm sure, that we'll be able to take a look at.
You know, I could, I didn't, there's so much in here, like, obviously, we don't wanna talk about it today. I could give you guys some of the added values, it's really not gonna make any sense to you. I mean, it'll make sense to you, but it's not gonna, this is what's gonna make, you know, this is the dollars and cents of why, again, as a taxpayer, kinda hard to ignore $156.
Exactly.
You know?
If I'm not mistaken, in this budget, we asked employees to increase 7%. Did we not?
The bargaining agreements actually have an increase just by 1% for, from a 10% increase to 11%, is what the bargaining agreements will call for.
So the next step is this goes to the bargaining?
It'll go to the task force, which is members of the bargaining, three bargaining units. So if there's a consensus of counsel, that's what I'm doing next.
Mark, right, you can't ignore $156,000.
Have you guys, this year, we simply cannot?
I'd like that information. I'm not ready to make a decision tonight.
Do you not want me to take it to the task force, then?
You can take it to the task force, but I'm not ready to, personally, I'm not ready to make a decision.
Okay. What information do you need, Jim, or can we provide, or the rest of counsel?
It'll take me a while to write it all down.
Okay, that's fine. I don't, I don't think we should take it, we can discuss internally what we do next, but maybe we need to get counsel's approval before we do that.
Mark, what's the window on this? Is there a window?
Well, you know, it's so funny, this process started, you know, eight weeks ago, and it just, time just keeps flowing. I'd like to, what's today, the 20th? And, you know, next week's shot, and then, you know, the second week in December is pushing it to get cards out if we make a switch, but we can do it. I prefer the end of the first week of December, if we really wanna pull the trigger and make sure all the employees...
Yeah, good.
And then, and then what I would do, you guys, is have schedule, once, if we make the decision to move forward with UPMC, and we get the group enrolled, I would order these kits for everybody and have a series of meetings. I usually go down to the garage once or twice, over to the fire department, you can never get the police, so you just hand them out your package and they go, "Okay." But I can certainly have a meeting for, you know, all the non-reps at the city building or, as many as you guys need, we're one block down the street, so. Communication is what we do, you know, that, we wanna make sure everybody knows what they're what they're getting going into this, what to watch out for. But again, my recommendation is that it's not going to be a problem. And if there is problems, we're going to be managing those problems for you.
Any other questions from council? Mark, thank you.
You guys already called us, you know how to get ahold of me, so...
Yeah, I do.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, all. I'm locking my cargo. Oh, I should have said this, then... Good luck.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, Andy, go ahead.
Okay, so if healthcare wasn't exciting enough, let's move on to pension actuary discussions.
Hold on two seconds, sorry. Now, are you going to take that to the task?
I don't, I need to discuss internally what makes sense. So, I'll need to, I need, I don't know. We have to, we'll have to. We'll have to, just out of time, we'll have to take to the task force and see what feedback we get as well. And then we'll come back to council. Okay, so, the next presentation is by Frank Monaco from Cowden Associates. Frank is our pension actuary. His job is to essentially assist us with compliance, but also then sort of forecast for us based on what our plan needs are, what our MMO is. He can talk about all that. But Frank is here tonight because we kicked off a discussion at the last meeting, at the last budget hearing, about the possibility of borrowing additional funds to cover the unfunded liability of our three pension plans, which is $7.3 million. And we're looking at various scenarios and the pros and cons of that. And council asked for a presentation from Frank to ask some questions. Frank has prepared, we've got a handle in front of you, I think, yep? And we're going to go through...
Yes.
Yes, it's titled City Meadville Bond Issue for Pension Plans. And Frank will, the first page is mostly sort of a history of how we got here, sort of where we're at, and then we'll go into...
And I know you have a lot of other things to do, so I'll try to go through the beginning part quickly. But the background is important before we get to the bond issue. As you know, the current state of the retirement program for the city employees, since 2014, the city has been able to negotiate with bargaining units to close the defined benefit plans, not just one, or to all three of them. And that's for new hires and rehires included. Instead, those affected employees, those affected new hires would go into a defined contribution plan. And that was a really, really big change for the city. We know from particularly a cost perspective, going to a DC plan. However, although the DB plans, defined benefit plans are closed, you're still going to have to contend with them for quite some time, 50 to 60 years. But there is one thing we know, there's one thing we know. We know the current costs and liabilities are around here. We know for a fact, they have to go to zero. We know that. So, that's the good news. By what trajectory they get to zero, we don't know. And as a matter of fact, in that vein, I think it was about last week or a couple of weeks ago, I think we prepared some very quick projections that showed, we took two of the significant risks for defined benefit plans, investment and mortality, like people living longer or shorter, and showed how variations in that, those assumptions drastically changed the DB plan costs. And if you looked at those graphs, what you notice is the DC costs are completely inflexible and didn't change at all to that. Under Act 205 in Pennsylvania, we do these evaluations that Andy mentioned every two years. And the primary purpose is to compute the minimum funding requirements for the two following years. So, the 2019 valuation that we just finished was for the 2020 and 21 MMOs. One important component of that MMO is the unfunded accrued liability, which is the difference between the accrued liability and the plan assets. So, that begs the question, what exactly is accrued liability? Just a quick way to try to describe it, if the current plan, current BB plan provisions and current assumptions had always been in effect, and the city always made their contribution on January 1, and all of the assumptions exactly worked out over time, then your assets would be equal to the accrued liability. But we know the assumptions are not always met, they're never met, and there's variations between the accrued liability and the plan assets. When the accrued liability exceeds plan assets, then we have to make a temporary contribution to try to close that gap. On the other hand, if you're fortunate where your accrued liability is less than the plan assets, you get a credit for a temporary period. Now, for this purpose, the city uses a smooth asset value designed to help with the fluctuations in the market, so that you don't have your MMOs bouncing up and down. Can you go to page 3, Andy? I know it's hard to see. On page 3, now that is for the, it's hard to see the label at the top. That is for the non-uniformed pension group only. The black line, the one that has more ups and downs, is the actual market performance of the pension fund. And the green line is the smooth asset value, which we use solely for the funding calculations. And as you can see, when you see the troughs there, the dot-com bust that hit '01 and '02, and then, of course, the downturn in '08, the big downturn in the black. The green smooth assets did a very good job tracking without much up and down in that asset.
Counselors, we use this one just as an example. Our three pension plans, though they're funded at different levels, they're funded, they have the same investment strategy, so the curve is pretty much the same for each, for all three plans, it just happens to be one sample.
And if you're interested in that particular method, it's described in Section 5 of the draft reports. So, the unfunded accrued liability, as I said, we measure it every two years on the odd year of January 1. The key point to remember in Number 7, yeah, can we go back to Page 1, Andy? Uh-oh, you're...
I know, back to Page 1, yeah.
Is that unfunded accrued liability is not a static. It's very dynamic, and it moves around quite a bit. And as an example, to just show that, on page 4, back again. Again, this is for the non-uniformed plan, and this is the historical unfunded accrued liability for the non-uniformed plan. Now, in particular, if you look at the far left, at 1109, that's right after the 2008 asset loss, the unfunded accrued liability is a little bit over $3 million. And then, in 2010, the city deposited $3.4 million in a bond issue. Now, the dashed curve below that is the expected unfunded accrued liability. So, at 11, 2011, the unfunded accrued liability was expected to be negative. It looks like a little over, a little under $500,000. However, the actual was about half a million. Now, what does that difference come from? That difference comes from experience gains and losses, when what actually happens with participants and assets differ from the assumptions. And that also included our assumption changes, if any, that we make. So, you see, it's very different how the actual unfunded accrued liability moves with respect to the expected.
So, Frank, does this show, so, is the takeaway here, right? So, that we funded the plans at, what, $3.4 million back in 2010? But this is essentially shows how the unfunded liability has grown over the time horizon since.
Right. Not only that, but the fact that you funded and thinking that, oh, it's going to be zero and stay zero, that's not the case, as the experience gains and losses accumulate and change things along the way. So, it's very much a moving target.
I'm looking at page 4, and my question is, and this is, when they funded the shortfall several years ago, this is our actual unfunded liability growth. Do you have a chart that shows what would have happened if they had never funded?
I do not, but we could do that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be interested to see how they end up.
Okay. Yeah, I can do that. Can you go back to Page 1?
We'll look at a similar scenario to that, though, right? One of your future scenarios, if we don't fund going forward.
Uh-oh, right, don't.
Which might, but anyhow, I don't want to interrupt.
One important thing before we get to those scenarios, can you go back to page 3, Andy? If you go to the very end of that smooth asset chart for the non-uniformed plan, you will notice at 11, 2019, our current valuation, the green smooth asset value is about $1.5 million greater than the actual market. So, that tells us that we have an unrecognized loss, that eventually, we're going to have to reflect. And under Act 205, that's reflected on a five-year smoothing, so we would pick up a part of it at '21, and a part of it at '23. Now, so now to the question of the bond, so that's just sort of a background about how unfunded accrued liabilities move. We were asked to consider a very, very narrow and specific kind of scenario. The first one that we looked at was as if the plan assets earned 7.5% every year without fail. And moreover, that, as far as the accrued liability goes, there were no gains and loss in that either, meaning that participants retired when they were assumed to, died when they were assumed to, et cetera. So, you see, it's a very contrived kind of example. And we just wanted to compare two things. Let's take that scenario, and we'll look at one, where we throw $7.3 million at it, and another where we don't. And that's, the numbers are laid out on page 5, sorry, it's hard to see through the screen. The box on the left that has the three columns in, that's the scenario where the bond is purchased and deposited into the plans. So, there's, there are two payment streams. One, the first column is that repayment of the bond, and then the second is the payment towards any unfunded accrued liability. Now, one thing that I did do, and this was just for time and economy, instead of trying to do an Act 205 projection every two years, which it would have taken a lot more time to get ready, I ran this through our valuation system, which does a annual valuation instead of every two. And instead of, under Act 205, when you do a bond, when you do a bond, the amortization of the unfunded is automatically canceled. Whereas, in the valuation system, it will only cancel if you have a zero or negative unfunded accrued liability. So, I guess what I'm saying at is, if you're looking at line-by-line numbers, they might not line up with exactly what would happen. But if you look at it in total, in aggregate, it's a pretty good estimate. And since we're only concerned about differences, I thought that was adequate for this purpose. So, as I said, those three, those three columns are for the situation where there's a bond. The total cash layout for that, to fund that, in the green box at the bottom, is $14.6 million. And then to the right of that, that single box is the situation, as Andy mentioned, where there is no bond. It's just to let the plan go as is, and that's about $15.2, the cash layout. So, in that situation, the cash layout for the bond scenario is more favorable and looks like a good idea, to the tune of almost $700,000, the savings to the city in that scenario.
The only thing that I would like to point out is, when you see the, towards MMO, that is just the unfunded liability. There is normal cost. The normal cost of the payroll plus the admin fees, that's not, this is just the unfunded liability portion. So, if you're looking at that number, saying that's 702, where you're going to add about another $650,000 to $700,000 on top of that, would be like our total MMO. Because the normal costs and admin fees are not in that, towards MMO. That's just the unfunded liability portion.
Yeah, thank you, Debbie. Yeah, that's an important distinction. This is, we're trying to focus solely on the payments toward the unfunded accrued liability, since that's what the bond issue is about, that portion. But as Debbie pointed out, that's not the total MMO. And then, if you go to page 6, is probably a better graphical representation of just that cluster of numbers. The stacked bar chart, the blue charts, that's the bond repayments. The orange is the payments, as Debbie called, we called on that exhibit, towards the MMO into the plan for any unfunded accrued liability. And then the black line is the no-bond situation, and those are the payments to fund the unfunded accrued liability. So, just a pictorial representation.
So, in this case, right, this assumes that we hit our 7.5%, everyone dies when they're supposed to, projected, that you see the difference between the solid black line, no bond, no borrowing, and the height of the orange curve essentially is the savings, is the difference?
Yeah, the savings would be the distance from the top of the orange bar to the...
So, in 2030, there would not be a savings.
What's that?
Yes.
The negative.
Right.
Your counsel Monroe is pointing to the negative in that one column. That kind of goes to my comment about using our valuation system as opposed to doing an honest-to-goodness Act 205. In the valuation system, when we get to 1121, or 1120, the unfunded is still positive. So, Act 205 would cancel all the amortization schedules, but our system retains it. And that's, that's where that's coming from.
We, it's a little off-topic, but do we have the ability, as Level 1 distress municipality, to reduce the amortization contribution as we did in 2015 and 2016? That was from a State Auditor General's office, that's the reports.
No. And to answer the question is, back in 2009, right after the '08 market, Act 44 was passed that allowed, they retold the whole distress system for Act 205, creating Level 0, Level 1, Level 2, and Level 3. And to be Level 1, you have to be less than 90% funded on an aggregate basis, as I remember, between 70 and 90. And the city, at some point, was able to make that election. Did they actually contribute less than the full MMO?
Yes.
They did, okay.
For two years, I think.
And then, now to answer your question is, the only way to redo that is you have to get back up to 90, and then it resets. And then if you fell that down below 90, then you would get... Then you want to go to page 7? This is the example where counsel Monroe suggested is, what if we look at an extreme example? Extreme, like where we throw in a bunch of money and then hit it with a big negative return? And again, we modeled that. The way that turns out is, you know, we throw a bunch of money in, and then you hit a big loss right on top of it that's really bad. And in this case, considering the two, the not doing the bond is the better choice. If this were the, and again, this is a very contrived scenario, where we have 7.5% return... a half return every year, except in 2020, right after the bond deposit, a negative 17 and a half. What's interesting about that one, though, if you look at the cash flows on a present, if you look on a present value basis, on a present value basis, the bond actually looks better, but not on cash. Because if you flip the page, Andy, again, we're talking about being hit with a huge asset loss, so you see the, both the orange and the black lines go up to take care of that loss. But again, on a present value basis, the bond is better, at least at seven and a half. And one other thing that I did think about of the bond, the bond issue, thinking the other extreme, we looked at a big negative return, and it made me wonder if there were any risk, I know this sounds funny, on the upside, that if you put in a bunch of money, and then you got a huge return, and then now you're way overfunded, whereas on the no-bond side, you don't have to put in any more, but on the bond side, I don't think you can take the money back up. That was just a thought. The bottom line in all of this, and that's only looking at two very narrow and very specific scenarios. You know, if we had time to look at a whole bunch of different ones and maybe do like a stochastic thing, that one might give you a better picture, but the bottom line to all of this is, there is some investment risk to the idea.
Well, I got a question for you.
Yeah.
If you were sitting in our seat, and you had to make this decision, what would you do? You're the expert.
Well, I'm not a bond expert.
Well, what would you do?
7.3 million put in. Okay, so I'm thinking aloud. Sure, because I don't feel expecting this. Usually, I guess when I think about a bond, you get the money, and I don't know, you build a bridge. Right, hey, we have a bridge, and then you pay it back, pay back the money. In this, I'm a little bit uneasy, because one of the scenarios we don't look at is, what if there was sustained losses in the market? And that's what I would be concerned about.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, because that's the spot we're on.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, you did.
I'm not the normal mayor.
See, yeah, it's easy for me to give you an answer, but, Sam, this is what I don't know, is my eyes are always focused on the pension plan, but I guess the bond has ramifications outside of the plan, correct? And that's what I don't know.
Do you mean to put you on the spot?
That's okay.
That's what we've got to deal with.
Well, you see, I was kind of speechless, too. I didn't... I know that was very brief, and it was very quick, but I think it's what you already know. You know, there are, there's some risk.
My concern is not so much right now, but what happens if the economy tanks? If you saw the paper, Negro Tribune front page, it talked about the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, they're concerned in 2020 of a recession. So we have to keep that in mind if we did this, and that, the amount's changed, I mean, you know. We don't know what that number's going to be, no one does.
And then just going back to the beginning of my thought, the good news is, you know, these D plans are closed, and this is a temporary issue in the sense that it's not forever and ever and ever, this particular plan. And I know years ago, when we came up and you were making the decision to go to a DC plan, there was talk that, you know, there was going to be some time until you really get to the real savings.
Exactly. We're starting to see some of that now, you know, not big numbers, but we're starting to see that. My concern is just the economy, you know, we don't know what the economy's going to do. I just want to get your opinion on the risk.
I think another takeaway, right, is that no matter, no matter what happens, our costs are going up in the short term, that our, however we tackle whether we borrow or don't, that unfunded liability still begins, based on the scenario, right, still is going to creep up.
That's why we pointed to the fact that a 1-119, your smooth assets was greater than market, so there's that 3.2 million that will be recognized in 2021, that will affect the 23 and 22 and 23 MMOs, and then the remainder to 2025 valuation, which affects 26, 27.
See, I don't have a problem with bond borrowing of 300,000 of the bond that we've talked about. I'm okay with that. I'm just not comfortable with borrowing 7.3 million on the pension plan, we don't know, we're taking a risk. And that's my personal feeling, and I have to base my decision on my personal feeling.
This is challenging stuff, with lots of moving variables. I don't know, I mean, council has other questions for Frank, or if there's a way that we can restate or review, or just be free to ask.
Putting it simply, it's not...
First-case scenario is you save about $35,000 here over 20 years. I don't know if that's...
It's not that we've contributed too little, it's that our investments have not performed as well as the market would have indicated.
That seems to be the case.
And we're going out for RFPs.
Yes. And in fact, I think, I think I sent an email to counsel, we were notified just two days ago that our CS McKee, who is our fund advisor, actually has been sold to a Chicago investment firm, and will actually need to be, will be discussing having to assign our investment agreements we have with CS McKee, which is probably just further evidence of it's time to go out for the RFP, but...
It's a good timing to look.
Right.
Now, if there's any other questions you think about, you can just email them to Debbie or to Andy, and...
Thank you.
Thank you for all the information.
Frank, before you take off, though, you can sit down, I think. One of the other, at our budget discussion last week, one of the questions was, what if we don't fund our MMO? And the question, what is Erie doing? Erie has about an $80 million unfunded liability, but they are in fact paying their MMO. They've not defaulted, they're meeting their obligations, they're having the same, they're in the same crunch that we are, frankly. Our unfunded liability per capita basis is not ever a good comparison here, but if you take the size of Negro, right, of, you know, just say we're a 10,000 population, Erie's 100,000 population, our 7.3 million of unfunded liability times 10 is 73 million, closer to 80. They've got different mortality tables, of course, different investment assumptions, but just on a per capita basis, it would seem that their unfunded liability is in step with ours, and they are meeting their MMO. I'd ask Erie to research, and I think he's, just to talk about the, you know, the obligations on the Municipal Pension Plan Recovery Act, of sort of what happens if you don't, and bad things happen.
Are you talking about where you certify MMO, you contribute less and create an efficiency?
Yes.
Right.
Or don't contribute at all, and what Act 205 provides. So a number of the professionals in the room deal with different pieces of this act. The full name of it is the Municipal Pension Fund Standard and Recovery Act, and it's 65 pages dictating what the city and other municipalities must do with respect to pension funds. And it actually includes very clear language that says every municipality is by this act put on notice as to its duty to fund this pension plan. That's actual language from it. And it details what happens if we were to not do that. And the bottom line is, the Commonwealth would first make us do it by an action mandamus, so they would come after the city to fund it with interest. And the other things that follow, and the dominoes that would fall, would be they would cease to fund state aid to the pension plan, which would be to the tune of a half $9 a year. So those funds would get held. I also believe it would be a breach of our bond covenants with other lending that we've done. It would certainly affect our rating as far as going out to the market, which would affect all of our future borrowing. So it's really a default on all financial fronts, including the biggest one, which is the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So that's really not an option for the city or any other municipality not to fund the MMO.
So our MMO has been calculated based on your recent study, and that's in effect for two years.
Right. The 2020, and then it will be recalculated in 2021 based on some new payroll and estimated report contributions. But it's based on the 1-119.
But for example, if we borrowed half of this amount, does that cut our MMO in half, or do we still have to contribute the full amount for the two years until we get recalculated?
There's a one-line item, the amortization payment toward the unfunded accrued liability, and it's proportionate. So if you deposit the whole unfunded, then that line is completely canceled.
Okay.
If you do half, then it's half.
Okay, it wouldn't be the original amount, but...
Not the whole MMO, just that one line item.
Right, okay.
Whenever money's used to make money, this is kind of a huge point that never gets, often doesn't get discussed. Yeah, I think I heard Andy say, we're being handled by somebody in Chicago, we really don't know what our money's being used for. Am I right?
We clearly know. It's highly regulated, we know, we direct the investment strategy, we get reports quarterly on our performance, what we're invested in, highly regulated.
Do you agree with what we're investing our money in?
Well, if you're talking about like social responsibility, or what types of firms...
I certainly am.
No, we don't have a policy on that. So we direct essentially a strategy, and then a sort of an asset class strategy, and then our investment firm invests on our behalf.
That's a very hard thing to do, I realize that, but we're getting into some dire times, and I think as a city, maybe we want to make this even more difficult, and look at what we're investing our money in, if we're investing money.
Sean, do you have anything else?
I don't know if you cleared up anything, okay?
Well, I think just to, you know, to reiterate once again, again, what we already know is, there is no limit to risk. I mean, we showed it, one scenario, the seven and a half all the way, wasn't a good thing. We showed an extreme example of a big negative in one year. You know, if there was more time, then you'd be looking at lots of other sequences of, or random ups and downs. And the other thing we held steady in there is, we didn't assume anything was going on in the liability, which we know doesn't happen.
Just the next topic, and it's not so much of a presentation, just a brief discussion. The Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development has what they call a Strategic Management Planning Program. This is actually, you might have heard the term in the past, the Early Intervention Program. The city, back in what year, Gary? 2006 and '07, had entered into the Early Intervention Program and had a complete study done of financial assessment, strategies, recommendations. City staff met just last week with Terry Kunkel, she is the local government services representative for our region, and recommended that the city, we had actually were meeting with her, looking for resources that we might go after for grant funds, so communities that had been enrolled in the Early Intervention Program are eligible to apply for funding, maybe for things that would, projects that would aid the city, equipment, software, things that increase efficiency. And she said the age of our study, which is now 13 or so years old, would not make us eligible for any of that funding, that she recommended that we re-enter the program, reapply. I had, in your counsel packet, provided you general information about the program and the program objectives, and I'll just cover some of them briefly. To engage in assessment of managerial practices, procedures, and practices relative operations and service delivery, identify prioritizing, address financial difficulties, strengthen managerial and administrative capacity, look at systems of multi-year revenue and expenditure trend analyses, policies and procedures around best management practices, planning regional cooperation strategies, these are all things that were evaluated in the 2013 program. We would highly recommend, given what we know is a structural imbalance in our budget, that's frankly what we were told and informed of in our, that we learned in the initial study, I don't think things have changed dramatically. We've taken a lot of good steps in terms of, there's a series of recommendations in there about GIS we have accomplished, we, the Stormwater Program is certainly a good example of how we take the test to increase revenue and look at different. It would be staff's recommendation that we prepare an application to DCED by the end of the fiscal year, because funding is available in the program, that we would submit an application in December to enter the program. There, in the Northwest Region alone, City of Corey, City of Erie, City of Erie just had their plan delivered within the last month or two. City of Warren, Warren County, Wesleyville Borough, Mill Creek Township, Wheatland Borough, City of Sharon, Decatur Township, and City of St. Mary's, they have recently just finished their program. Staff would recommend and would like council's consent, there's not, we're not authorizing signatures on a grant agreement, or on a grant application tonight, but would, I guess I want to assess council's interest in proceeding with this. There is a, we would apply for, request a 10% match to the grant. We think this could be a 60 or 70,000 dollar project, is what she estimated, and this would be looking at like a 10,000, I'm sorry, a 6 to 10,000 dollar, somewhere in there, match on the city's request. It will be a very valuable study, I think, to update, essentially update the prior study, work with council, work with staff on all these issues. And then thereby making us eligible for funding afterwards for various initiatives.
That was my next question, is this going to make it more, is it going to be a plus force, we're going to do?
Have we asked for money?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
I think it's a good idea.
Yep, you got it.
We're going to push hard then to maybe have an application on our December 4th agenda for council to authorize signatures on, so I'll come back to you on that future meeting.
What else you have?
And just for your radar screen, we need to be planning for the council reorganizational meeting in January. Under the Third Class City Code, that would be on Monday, January 6. We'll need to determine what time we schedule that meeting, because we'll need to advertise these meetings. So we'll need to know what time we schedule that reorganizational meeting on Monday, January 6. And then also with that, our first, typically our first meeting of the month will be the first Wednesday of the month. If we, if we're going to hold that, typically the organizational meeting, council would just set its meeting schedule for the rest of the year. That's one of the agenda items on that reorganizational meeting. However, if we're going to turn around and meet on Wednesday, the 8th, we'll have had to advertise already prior to that. So I don't know whether...
Wouldn't that be the second Wednesday of the month?
We could move it to the second Wednesday, so we could wait for council to determine their schedule on Monday, the 6th, advertise it, and then proceed from there. It's just going to be a time crunch that we'll need to, A, we'll need to set the time of the reorganizational meeting on the 6th, and then determine when we think we want our first meeting to be.
That's fine with me, what time did we do the...
We usually did it at 10:00, is what we normally did in the past.
If everyone's available, I haven't talked to council members-elect, but we can propose a 10 o'clock start.
Is that, we're pretty young?
Yeah.
It's good.
10 o'clock?
Yep.
And then, I think we should, we can engage in discussion with council members-elect as well, but if we were to, would we potentially dispense with our, the January, oh no, the January 8th is the second Wednesday, and now...
We have to close out 2019.
Versus a holiday. Yeah, you'd have the...
We have to close it out.
Right.
That's you do at the reorganization.
Yeah, it'll be at the reorganization, it'll be the final meeting of the prior council, if you will. We could have one meeting in January, on January 15th, the week after, if we...
And that would be our normal meeting time.
That would be the third Wednesday, normal meeting time.
But we may talk about changing the time.
Right.
From 4:15 to...
No, that would be a TV meeting.
That would be 15, that'd be the 6 o'clock meeting.
So I don't need, I guess I don't need final tonight, but we need to be thinking about those items just for, for staff to plan accordingly. But well, I'll, I'll check with council members-elect from Monday, the 6th at 10:00 a.m. for the reorganization meeting. Just some really quick points, leave collection schedule. We are still on schedule. We ran overtime crews this past weekend to catch up, to finalize the, the week of 11:18 on the schedule. Essentially, at this point, I need to ask residents that if your schedule has ended for your neighborhood, to please not bring leaves to the street. We have one entire section of council yet, of the city, I'm sorry, that begins next week, but obviously we've already had the start of winter. We've been salting and plowing. My neighborhood happens to be the worst offenders, the truck left in on Saturday and overtime, and immediately Sunday, there's brand-new piles of leaves out there. We just don't have the manpower to, to go back and do the entire city. So I'm asking residents to please abide by the schedule. They can use craft paper bags, Tri County or Waste Hauler does pick up organic material, and we'll do so through the end of the month. But residents, if your schedule has ended in your neighborhood, please do not bring them out to the street. Just a reminder, free two-hour holiday parking begins next Wednesday, the 11, the 27th, that's the day, the afternoon before Thanksgiving, will continue through the Friday after Christmas. And the city building will be closed Thanksgiving Day and Friday the day after. And a reminder that Light of Night, held by the Chamber of Commerce, is Friday, December 6th. Also carriage rides hosted from the Market House by the front of the Market House. That's all I have, Your Honor, in terms of my report.
I'm not sure if everybody saw it, but the Christmas tree is now in the gazebo, and it's a nice-looking tree, huge tree, nice tree.
It's always bigger than you think when you bring it home.
Okay, and your old business have boards of authority, commission, commissions, appointments. Everybody has a list. If you remember last year, I asked if we could have council make these appointments before the beginning of the year, and there are some appointments here that have not been appointed, that, and Andy, from what I understand, no one has sent a letter of interest on any appointments?
If you, on your list is a thing called, is a section called Prior Expirations. We know on the zoning hearing board, Rob Humphreys has expressed interest in being reappointed, and on the housing authority, Jim Rosakis has expressed interest. I don't have formal letters from them, but we did reach out, members of those, Gary had reached out to Gary, to Rob, and Katie, you checked with Bill Thomas at the housing authority about Jim's appointment. So those two have expressed interest in reappointment. The market authority, right now is fully staffed. There's rumor that there could be a resignation, and there is some interest, and we do have a letter of interest from someone who would fill that vacancy, but the vacancy isn't official yet because that individual has not formally resigned, so I haven't...
What they did, they started advertising it because they were told there was going to be a vacancy, but that letter has not got to their hands.
Correct.
Because I've gotten some phone calls of interest, and there is no vacancy at this point.
Right.
The one that I was looking at is the prior ones. We have the Midvalley Water Authority, we have the zoning hearing board, and the housing And as far as I know, on the water authority, all these individuals has asked to be reappointed, and they have already expired in 2018.
And one in 2019.
19.
Do you want a resolution for, a motion for all three of them there?
No, I'd like to do them individually, please, because I have a conflict of interest with one. Is that okay with you?
All right. You need a motion?
Can somebody make a motion?
Motion to appoint John Fulmer?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Arora?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Pataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns.
I'm going to accuse myself of conflict of interest. Okay, we have Dennis Fenton expired on...
Well, we can do these together.
Yeah, you can do them together.
Motion to appoint Dennis Fenton and Tim Grove.
So move second.
Roll call.
Arora?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Pataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. We have zoning hearing board. You said Robert did show interest in that?
Yes.
Also move.
Second?
Second, Your Honor.
Roll call.
Arora?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Pataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. And housing authority?
Motion to appoint James Rosakis, the housing authority.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Arora?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Pataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns.
Did I miss any ones that have already expired?
I don't believe so, Your Honor.
Then you'll see in the middle, though, there, there's a number of them that expire then January 1st that will require communication with those individuals and a plan for council.
But they expire after January 1st?
On, yeah, on the 1st.
Okay. We'll deal with that in January. Okay. Now, I haven't missed anyone, right? Make sure. Now, we want to thank everybody, you know, takes up people's time, and they volunteer their time, so we appreciate the authorities, members that take the time to do the job. So appreciate it. Under new business, A, ordinance first and final reading. Katie, I'm sorry, I'm thinking Debbie tonight, I don't know.
I don't think I'm reading it yet.
So not yet. So if healthcare wasn't exciting enough, and pension actuary science wasn't exciting enough, this then is the continued discussion and proposed action of a debt ordinance, which we've discussed over the last six weeks, frankly, the refunding of 2010 and 2014 bond series, borrowing for new debt to finance capital, new capital projects, HVAC and roof replacement projects at the DDP Building to the tune of approximately 2.3 million, and the Meadville Area Sewer Authority for 1 million. And the question then is, do we add to that the $7.3 million for, to fund the pension unfunded liability, as we've discussed earlier this evening? When John and Pat were here two weeks ago, is when John had discussed sort of the various amortization schedules of borrowing and what that looks like in terms of our MMO, how we would look at those over, how we would address the debt schedules and how they compare them with the savings would be, council had asked to sort of punt at that point and consider two different ordinances. One, debt ordinance that would cover just the refunding and the new money for DDP Building and MESSA, or a separate, different ordinance that would cover all three. And so those are what are before us this evening. Obviously, the, there are budget implications in terms of, we know the refunding portion, we're hoping that John's going to go to the market and bring us about $300,000 in savings upon the refunding, and that would go to the market in early December, ideally, or early to mid-December.
We're probably looking at mid-December now because of the timeframe of this meeting and getting a rating in place, not knowing what we're going to find, so.
And, and then of course, however we would structure the debt service of a pension bond, then would, could have dramatic impacts on our 2020 budget as well. So I don't know how, that's just sort of the preview. I don't know if you want us to... The other thing I want, and in fact, how it impacts the budget, I had prepared, Debbie had prepared frankly, a, there's a one-pager, it's all paperclipped together, it's called City of Meadville 2020 Budget Options, and there are sort of four different scenarios that we, that we look at, just for the purposes of continued conversation around the bond borrowing. So we start each of these options, one through four, we start with the out-of-balance figure of the budget that was presented to council two weeks ago, $656,000 out of balance, and then we look at various scenarios whereby that gap might be closed. Hopeful that the bond refinancing would result in $300,000 savings in that budget and debt service in the 2020 budget. We talked about healthcare savings tonight of 156,000. Our workers' comp policy renewal just this week. We expect to save $15,000 from what we had budgeted.
The actual savings is about five from policy to policy, but what we had budgeted...
We just budgeted a higher increase.
Yeah, we had an increase in that.
And then we have a wage adjustment of 9,000 based on just some wage evaluation, and then that, so those items would leave us at a deficit of 176,000. And then closing that, there's some various options, right, where you, $176,000 revenue gap would require 1.21 mil tax increase under option one. Option two, looked at the pension bond borrowing for the unfunded liability, but looking on the shorter amortization schedule, which was, had been found on page three of John's presentation, which is from two weeks, or from last week or two weeks ago. Option three would be that same borrowing, but level funded over a 20-year amortization. And then option four is a staff reduction. Four staff members, essentially one from each department, if you will, one from, from public works, one from fire, one from non-representatives, and staffing and fire would, would net $224,000 in personnel savings to close the gap. So that's just for context as we continue discussion.
Jim, you wanted more time on the healthcare savings, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't know where that's going to actually be.
So Your Honor, we've got two bond summaries prepared, summary ordinances prepared, one which is the, the larger borrowing, and the other is the, that includes the unfunded liability borrowing, and the other, so that's $23 million, that's what the ordinance would provide for borrowing authority up to 23 million, which includes that unfunded liability figure, or the other ordinance version is 14 million.
I think the actual amount would be 11 and about 21 would be the actual.
In doing both bonds as a savings of how much?
Depending on the ultimate structure you choose on the amortization of the pension side, if it's sort of what we call that matched amortization, where you're leaving the final maturity the same as the MMO payment schedule, that would provide savings next year of
That was on page three.
On page three?
It's on option two, isn't it? I'm sorry, is it on option two?
It's option two on the, yes.
On the, on the option.
Option two, okay.
Yep.
So being moved from 100,000 to, if you stretched it out to the 20-year scenario, that would provide about, budgetably, about 530,000.
Yeah, I see that. That's a big decision to make.
A big decision to make.
So if you were in my shoes?
I'm good.
I really...
I depend on you to give us some...
I can tell you this, I can tell you this, the hardest part about asking me that question is because I'm on the bond side, and from a bond transaction proposal, makes a whole lot of sense because you're supposed to pay somebody 7.5%, you can go up on this at 3%. Of course it makes sense. The, what I can't comment on is, the other side that Frank talked about, is the investment, the assumptions, and how that affects your MMO moving forward. The one piece I did hear today is that even no matter what you do, you do nothing today, you do something today, two years from now, your MMO, your MMO is going to go up because you already have 1.5 million of deficits that's not in today's 7.5 million. So the only known is the unknown, and all I can tell you is that, well, yes, it makes sense, from a fixed scenario, it makes sense, but there's a lot of unknowns out here that I can't comment on because I don't know enough about them, and I don't know what's going to happen, and it would be unfair for me to even make a judgment call, but I think Frank also made a good point that we're not in your shoes, we don't have a budget to solve, we don't have other things we need to worry about, and unfortunately, I can't offer an opinion.
Fair enough.
When we, I just, we always, we say this every year, right, well, it's bad this year, wait till next year. So the bond refinance, right, of, that we forecasted hopeful savings of $300,000, that goes away next year. There's no, well, there's another series in the fall that we might, might be able to look at, but let's assume that we don't have, our debt service will rise by $300,000 next year, because we, as we talked last time, we've leveled out, we've smoothed out our debt service, so we're taking all the savings of this refunding, and this year, next year, debt service goes up by $300,000. So we out, immediately out of balance by $300,000 next year. We shouldn't expect the healthcare savings, you know, next year, we just always have to be mindful of what the future looks like.
Explain to me how this bond market works now, okay?
I can handle that, yes.
Yes. Explain to me what, what am I looking for, what am I thinking would make it tank, and what would I think if we went to war, would that make it better?
That would, okay, so when you say better...
When last time we went to war, the bond market's better?
Going too bad in the bond market.
Yes.
Typically, bad news causes havoc, causes a flight to safety. People think bonds are safe.
Okay.
If there's more buyers in the market, that makes rates lower because there's more demand. So typically, any bad news is good for bond issuers, like yourselves, and rates would be low. Rates are low now because not, there's any bad things happening in the U.S. today, but there's two major things happening. A, we're the best of the worst, meaning that global markets, we're the, we're the highest interest rates in global markets, which are helping suppress our rates, because now people are fleeing European bonds coming to the U.S. bonds, because they're slightly higher interest rate, not negative. And there's also the unknowns of the trade war. So those two things are helping in today's market, rates go lower. If more bad news comes down the pike, rates may go lower. If the economy starts to do better than expected, because people are always talking about a recession, economy starts to do better, you would see rates go up, because then you'd see inflation, inflation pressures in the market. So we're, market rates are driven by what's happening in the economy. I don't know if that...
Basically, the more people that are looking for bonds...
The lower rates are.
The lower the rates that we pay are.
Yes, helps you.
And there's been a lot of people looking for them.
Currently, yes. High demand.
I don't know, I'm just trying to explain...
But if you were to go back to that, I wish it would have brought it back to me, but I mean, we're at near historic lows in the last 40 years, because, you know, demand is high in the U.S. market for bonds.
And you're speaking to the borrowing side?
The borrowing side, yes.
Right.
I don't want to confuse it with the investment side.
To the borrowing side, just as John hinted before, it's a good time to borrow, right?
Yes.
If you're borrowing bonds. But what he, his previous disclaimer was, on the investment side, that's a completely different scenario, because the same market pressures will drive the stock market most of the time down.
But we're doing the 300,000 no matter what.
We're going to try.
We're going to refund and hope to get 300,000.
So is that what we're doing?
Yeah, I think you have two, you have two...
I understand.
Right. We thought the easiest way to present it to council, and the way it was advertised, is one of the bond ordinances has the larger sum, if council's inclined to include what you received information on tonight, to fund the pension fund at 7.3 million. The other one is the smaller amount, which is up to 14, and John McShane's indicating that it'll ultimately be 11.
Right.
Well, we don't have a decision among council on the pension.
Or on the healthcare.
Or on the healthcare.
Huh?
We don't have a decision on the healthcare?
Oh, no, no, I meant on this issue. I mean, you got, you have a number of bonds that are being issued.
Right.
I mean, this authority is going anyway.
Right.
You know, our refunding is going anyway. We don't have to make a decision on a pension bond.
We'll make it tonight, by the way.
If we're going to do it, we have to do it tonight. If, if we're going to do it, we have to do it tonight.
If you want it to be included in this round of funding.
Okay.
Or else, you would just do a completely separate bond issue later on.
Well, that was one of the.
Specifically, specifically dependent.
If we, there would be a disadvantage to doing this deal later on.
Like, what, $50,000?
Yeah, you'd have separate costs, yes.
That's what I'm trying to get.
Double cost.
When's the payment of the, the MMO due?
When we make two payments, 41 and 101.
She didn't need the money before that.
But how will we balance our budget if we don't have the number, that number to use as a placeholder?
Right.
So do you want us to read and vote on the, I think procedurally, if we read the summary for the, the larger bond issue, the 23 million, we'd read it first, and then we'll discuss and vote.
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, an act of November 20th, 2019, formal action constituting a debt ordinance under the local government unit debt act authorizing the incurring of non-electoral debt through the issuance of general obligation bonds in the maximum aggregate principal amount of 23 million, and, uh, $23 million covenanting, covenanting to pay and pledging taxing power for the payment of the bonds, establishing a sinking fund and appointing a sinking fund depository, fixing the form, interest rate, maturity, redemption, and other provisions for the payment thereof, accepting a proposal for the purchase of the bonds, authorizing a filing of required documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development, ratifying and directing certain ac- actions of officers, and making certain other covenants and provisions in respect of the bonds.
Motion.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, it's 23 million, because that includes 2 million for DEP building plus the 7.3.
Uh, yeah, so there's some, some wiggle room in there, but essentially, the reef, the amount of the refundings of the 2010 to 2014, about 2.3 million for DEP, 1 million for Massa, plus 7.3. What, what was that number, John? Did you just add that up as I spelled it out?
7.3, 2.31.
2.34.
Seven and a half for pension, that's 15, 17 and a half, 18, 20, I think it was 21, because, oh, I think I put 3 million for the DEP, it wasn't sure, you said it was.
I had asked that as the placeholder, as I was zeroing it, so we think that would be actually about 2.3.
Why, why does this say 14 million?
That's, that's, the 14 million doesn't not, does not include the pension.
That's a separate ordinance.
Oh, okay, but, well, is there another page here?
We didn't reprint the, we didn't print the whole thing, so you guys.
Okay, all right, so.
Because it's the same, really, the only difference is the number.
John, there's a, there's a single page, that's the 23 million, that just is the summary.
It's in here, or?
Mm-hmm, it'll be behind that 14.
Oh, okay.
Should be the last page in that section.
Well, that's what I was heading for, okay, so we do have a, I got it, yeah.
So if we authorize this amount tonight, and if you go to market, and at some point we decide we don't want to use the 7.3 million or some part of it, we are not obligated to complete that part of the borrowing, is that an accurate statement?
Once we get a market, you are obligated.
You're obligated.
So, the, that would be mid-December at the earliest.
Okay.
No, we already, now you gotta, now. If you have any questions, now it's a discussion.
Well, I, I, I thought about this, I thought about this a lot, and I think about my own personal way I handle my expenses and my debts, and I don't like to gamble, I'm not a gambler, I don't have my money in high-risk things, and I've just, now I'm worried about this number just being so large, I don't want to take a chance that 10 years from now they're going to say, who the hell put us in this mess? And everyone appointed D Roy, but.
Oh, no. You each get to vote individually.
But I, the smaller number, I'm not afraid of at all, the.
The 300, the 300,000?
Yes.
But this is all joined together?
I know, and the other, while we're putting money in the DEP.
Yeah, you gotta do that, and you gotta do the, the sure refunding. So what, what, what's left is worrying, you guys? The pension thing?
The pension.
That's the only thing?
Yes.
All right, well.
Well, that and the fact that you have a $656,000 deficit, you need to close the budget, so, how are you going to do that?
I like the healthcare savings.
Yeah, the healthcare savings.
Doesn't get you all the way.
Well, let's take a look at it for a second, if you have the healthcare, if you go with the healthcare, it's 154,000.
156.
156.
154.
So if you take that, first of all, you go to the $300,000 borrowing of the bond you're poking with, so now you're down to, what, 256 out of balance?
276. 276. And then these are your options.
Right, so the other option is you take a 1.2 tax mill increase. If you got the 150,000, you're down to 200, I don't want to look at these things, because I don't know what's happening. So, if you take the 154,000 off from the 656, plus the 300,000 for the bond, you're down to about 200 and.
Minus the other ones, you're down 176 out of balance.
Yeah, but those aren't all the savings yet.
These two are.
Well, those, those are the only savings that we see right now, there's other decisions that can be made that can make saving money, okay? We have a city building that Ainsworth has, their, their payment coming to us. If we take the 250,000 down, I believe if we're very careful and we're very, and look at other ways of saving, not necessarily losing employees, we can get that down to where we can live with it. Or the other cost is you just take and have that tax increase, because you know next year, you're already going to be out, what, $300,000? So by borrowing the 7.3 million, you're not only taking a risk, but you're out, next year, you're right back at the same table with the same number, and you're going to have, continue to have that. You can either raise taxes or cut services, that's the only two things that you can do unless you come up with new ways to bring money in. I mean, that's reality, okay? And what I feel personally, this is my personal feelings, you could take me for it, whatever, is kicking that can down the road, I'm borrowing the 7.3 million dollars, we don't know what the economy is going to do, and if that tanks, then we're going to have a bigger problem on our hands, because you're going to be raising more than three mils of tax to cover the, the, the difference, is that, I mean, that's what I'm looking at, and I, I feel I have to be respectful, I, my personally, I would not invest my money in this direction. That's my personal feelings, but, you know, I mean, do you want to take that risk where you don't know what's going to happen?
So we're back to laying people off or raising taxes?
Well, you can't raise taxes, three mils every year.
You can't, that's right.
So, I mean, it, that's, that's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard of. You've got to start in January, not when you're ready to pass the budget, to decide where you're going to get your money.
Well, we, we started that last year, and.
Yeah, but a couple of those things didn't work out, and we didn't really go into anything else, and that's what you need to do.
Exactly, that's my whole point, is that we need to focus on that, not just this council, future councils, you know what I'm saying? Last year, we thought we had a way to raise the 200,000, we sat at this table, we sat and we talked about it, it didn't come about, but honestly, shame on us, because we didn't start with something different or, or move forward with it. I just don't like borrowing money, we just keep kicking that can down the road, and it's going to end one day. Right now, we had a savings of, of what, 300,000 when we started out last year, '19, and.
Just, just your, just your contracts alone, and your increases in wages and everything, bump you up half a million dollars every year.
Right.
So, so let's be real.
Well, again, there's only two ways of doing this, you either find a new way to bring revenue in, or the taxes.
Yeah, and so, so the people, we're paying people, some people that don't even live in the city of Meadville, the people in Meadville are paying those taxes, and you're asking them to pay those, it's.
Well, there's some other options that you can do, I don't want to get into those right now, but they're at least one of the options I know.
And we have a motion and a second, here, we can, we can vote, and if it's voted down, then we go to the lower bond issue, or do you move to amend? You vote this down, go to the second bond issue, or do you move to amend this one to the lower figure?
You would call a vote on this one, because we have a separate ordinance.
All right. Any other questions from council?
This, um, so the, the smaller one is option two here, right?
Yeah, the one red that's before you immediately is the 23 million, that includes the pension fund borrowing.
The bond refinance, I'll have down below.
Oh, I'm sorry, option two on the.
That's the one I was looking.
No, no.
No.
It depends on how you would structure the debt service, and how it impacts the budget, so there's sort of two steps, right? You can borrow the money, and then how you pay for it is the second question. So, option two on this menu is, is tracking, the debt service tracking the MMO payments, is about 100,000, in 2020's budget would be about $100,000 savings, which was page three of John's.
Twelve-year term.
I'm sorry?
Twelve-year term for that.
Yeah, twelve-year term.
Right.
Option three then is the 20-year term level funding, which frees up significant assets in the first several years.
So option two, if you did the healthcare, if you ask 172, tax increase.
Any other questions?
No, we found some other savings, management and staff has found some other savings for us. The primary, my primary thing was to save cash flow on the budget for several years, understand there's a risk. I think we're all agreeing that we're not going to raise property taxes, so that eliminates the first three options of our, if we don't want to borrow 7.3 million, then, and we're not going to raise property taxes, the four budget options that.
Option two, so on the table, isn't it?
Well, that's, that's still borrowing the 7.3 million. And it would be actually a tougher payback.
Well, you're 176 off there.
Right? So, did we even vote?
Roll call.
Roa?
No.
Donahue?
No.
Pataglia?
No.
Mangela Bittner?
No.
Sterns?
No.
Okay, so we want to go ahead and go with the 300,000, is that the next bond?
Well, it would be, the 300,000 is just the savings that you hope to get.
14, 14. I'm sorry, 14, not in the first page.
First page.
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, an act of November 20th, 2019, formal action constituting a debt ordinance under the local government unit debt act authorizing the incurring of non-electoral debt through the issuance of general obligation bonds in the maximum aggregate principal amount of 14 million dollars, covenanting to pay and pledging taxing power for the payment of the bonds, establishing a sinking fund and appointing a sinking fund depository, fixing the form, interest rate, maturity, redemption, and other provisions for the payment thereof, accepting a proposal for the purchase of the bonds, authorizing a filing of required documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development, ratifying and directing certain actions of officers, and making certain other covenants and provisions in respect of the bonds.
Motion. Second.
Second.
Discussion.
This is the one with the $300,000 savings that's also.
Right, yeah.
It's just the original one we had talked about, yes.
Right. Oh, there's whole survey.
Yes.
We don't have any options on how this gets paid out or anything.
No, this is going to, all you're doing on this option for the refunding is lowering your interest cost, you're leaving the amortization exactly the same.
Okay.
And then you're adding the new money separately, and their, you know, Massa's taking theirs how they want it, and the DEP's going to be structured over time frame that's going to match their lease.
We're taking it all right now, but taking off our this year's.
In the day, debt service will be a reduction in next year's payment, whatever the market dictates.
$300,000, John.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was thinking higher.
Like 656?
That's high.
Any other questions?
Nope, that was it.
No. Any questions? No. Roll call.
Roa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Pataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bittner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Guys, thank you for all your help.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All the work.
Yeah. Is there any easy ones on this one? Hey.
Discussion, motion, terminating the 2012 Kepler commercial space property.
You need a motion? No, it's just a discussion, so Andy?
Yeah, I'll probably call for a motion if council's comfortable, but essentially, back in 2012, when the city took title to, is that right, 2012, yep, the city took title to the ground floor commercial condo space of the Kepler, at that time, we entered into an agreement, a property management agreement with the redevelopment authority to manage that on the city's behalf, with all the leasing and tenant relations, and, and essentially, as, as council's aware, about this time last year, the authority sort of realigned and their staff, resulting in the layup of their staff, and so essentially, we're asking council to terminate this agreement at this point. The redevelopment authority's already taken action to do so as a motion, this would just be council taking reciprocal action to terminate the agreement, and Mary Ann Manano, Director of Community Development, is, is sort of overseeing that. There are leases there that we need to renew, she's working on that, she's been in communication, working with Gary on those, but that's essentially where we're at, and I guess would ask for a motion of council to terminate.
And so move.
Second.
I'm sorry, who's seconded?
John's second. Any questions? Roll call.
Roa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Pataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bittner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Decision, so it's going to be discussion first on Brody's petition for removal of sidewalk.
Your Honor, I'll just do a brief introduction, maybe hand it over to Gary, but Mr. Brody, who's here in the audience this evening, had petition counsel through our, through the mechanism established by ordinance to remove sidewalk on essentially one side of 101 Lincoln Avenue, a property that he owns there. Gary, would you review the ordinance, the process, and then the staff recommendation?
Sure, so we take an application, a petition to remove sidewalk, then we take, have this public hearing on that, which is conducted by me, so in this case, we had Mr. Brody and Mr. Crowley from the Tribune were there at the, at the hearing. After that, we have a certain amount of time to make a staff recommendation to council, we present that recommendation, and then council would actually make, make that decision either to grant or deny, and I believe that's my motion, and then, so that's, that would terminate the, the process there.
So council before you is, is a recommendation from my office to, actually to deny the petition, so essentially deny the request to remove, and there's some background in that memo, but then also the rationale, items listed one through four there, that eliminating the sidewalk would cut off direct sidewalk connectivity to Lincoln Avenue for residents on Columbia Avenue between Ray Street and Kearney Avenue, eliminating sidewalk, number two, would reduce one of the access routes to the school bus stop at the intersection of Lincoln Avenue and Ray Street, number three, eliminating the sidewalk would create an uncontrolled crossing of Ray Street at an unnamed alley between Lincoln Avenue and Columbia Avenues, and number four, the Peter's Heat Treat industrial facility across the street on the south side, with frequent truck deliveries across the sidewalk at the facility's driveways and parking lot, and having an alternate sidewalk on the north side of Ray Street is in the best interest of public safety, and is the rationale for staff recommendation for denial. with frequent truck deliveries across the sidewalk at the facility's driveways and parking lot. And having an alternate sidewalk on the north side of Ray Street is in the best interest of public safety, and is the rationale for staff recommendation for denial.
Can I ask what number three was?
The, yeah, Chris, I'll give you a copy, I'm sorry.
Chris, you did sign up to speak, so I know you're, you're gonna speak here in a second. Council, do you have any questions for, for staff before Chris gets up and speaks? Chris, your turn.
Okay, thank you. First off, I haven't seen the recommendations or the rationale until just now. So. I, I see the only one here that maybe of concern to council would be my neighbor across the street, which is Peters Heat Treat. And why I say that is I checked today with Hubbard Bus Company, and the mayor's aware of this, he saw me down there. And I tried to gather the numbers of the individuals utilizing the school bus, and more specifically, the bus stop that's at Lincoln and Race. Okay? I am on the, uh, let's see, I'm on the northwest corner. Peters Heat Treat is on the northeast corner. The bus stop is on the northeast corner. It's not on the corner that I'm at. Additionally, and I'll give you some numbers, and the city might want to be concerned with this, just based on the bus numbers and demographics. In the fifth ward, there are a total of thirty-eight students taking, boarding, and onboarding bus. That's thirty-eight. But thirty-eight people don't use the bus every day. Okay? And that's breakdown between high school students and elementary school students. It's bus two thirty-one that makes the route for the elementary first, and then the high school second. On the, on the elementary side, the first go down, there's eleven children that are written in for the bus. I'm told approximately six children utilize the bus out of the eleven. For high school students, there are twenty-seven. Out of those students, it, I'm told there's approximately twelve students that take the bus. Now, in the fifth ward, there are four bus stops. The Lincoln Avenue and Race Street bus stops, which is on the other corner, not my corner, is one elementary school student that signed up for that bus stop, and there are six high school students. From what I understand, sometimes there's no high school students that get on there. But that will be the case, it could be utilized. The closest bus stop from that, and I forget the name of the alleyway, but it's near the old convenience, or the convenience store that's there. So, for a high school student to walk that three quarters of a block is not, not too difficult. However, the bus stop is not on the side of the street that I'm on. When the school comes, is out, recesses, the return trip is on the opposite corner. It's across the street, but on the same side. So, it's still not on the corner that I'm at. Okay? So, that's with regard to the bus. Now, I also checked with, and I can give you, sorry, I don't have one for each of them to refer to it, but I'll give it to you. And maybe it's a red erring. Somebody's got to share. You two are sitting close together.
We'll see.
This is the Catibus. Now, there's a Catibus stop, and those bus stops are indicated, there's a map in here. Shows Lincoln Avenue, you all see, everybody see Lincoln Avenue? Alright, the bigger dot corresponds with the actual schedule. Okay, if you're going to pick the bus up at that, that dot, that's where Cat is going to stop, it's an official bus stop. Okay? Now, there's bus stops, when you look at Lincoln Avenue, there is one official red dot, that's not on Lincoln and Race Street, that's down near the store. Okay? The other little dots are where they have a sign. So, you can come to that sign and be picked up there. But they're not guaranteeing they're going to be there or within a few minutes pursuant to the schedule. They like to be on time, but it doesn't happen all the time, okay? In talking to the good folks at Cat, they indicated to me that if you're between those signs and you stick your hand out in the air because you want to catch the bus and you're not at the sign, they will more than likely stop for you. Especially if you're usual and they saw you yesterday or throughout the week and they're familiar. So, that's, that's their bus stops. With regard to the numbers, they, they couldn't give me any specific numbers as to the people that use it. I just want to indicate that fifth ward is bounded by, on the north and south side, Rogers Ferry Road and Lincoln Avenue. You know, it could be Terror Street, but it's probably Lincoln Avenue. When you go over the Terror Street Bridge, you're looking for a little confusion.
Spring Street Bridge.
Pardon me?
The Spring Street Bridge, you mean?
I'm sorry, the Spring Street Bridge. When you go over the Spring Street Bridge, that would be the road on the other side. And, and I think there's only two houses that are on that, that, that way before you get to the old lumberyard. But, the confines of the avenue, there's sidewalks, if you will, on my side of the street and Peters Heat Street. If you go down to the other side of Rogers Ferry Road, the end of that big block, there are no sidewalks. Okay, they die to back into Lincoln Avenue on both sides, there are no sidewalks there. The children in the fifth ward from the, the trailer park, they get on the bus on Columbia Avenue. They cross the street, and they stand on the corner where the sidewalk is there. Now, with regard to the sidewalk from Lincoln to Columbia, down Race Street to Columbia, there are sidewalks there. I'm proposing just not down my side of the property, it wouldn't be contingent. And that's where, when I opened up, this, the other side of the road where Peters Heat Street is, where the bus stop is, they're raising the issue of it's industrial. Peters Heat Treat, I think you all know, they're moving. That place is not going to be there for long. I don't know what's going to be there. But there is a sidewalk there. And the city owns part of the sidewalk as you go down towards the old Race Street Lumber as well. Now. I did go up and down the street, I did get affidavits signed that nobody on the street was worried about that sidewalk being taken out. The one woman with a couple of young children, she had one child that utilizes the bus, I'm assuming that's the child we're talking about. And she said, well, he crosses the street anyway to get the bus. So, in a practical sense, I don't think there should be any reason why I can't remove the sidewalk. In a reasonable sense, I think it's reasonable as well, because there's a sidewalk on the other side of the street, number one. Number two, there's no bus stop on my corner, there is that Catibus, but that Catibus, I'll indicate to you, is fifty-eight feet down the road. They don't stop on the corner. That's where the sign is, fifty-eight feet away. And talking to Hubbard, he said, we rarely stop at the corner, we stop past the corner. And that's why they're on the Race Street, I mean, on the Peters Heat Treat side, because they don't want to block the intersection. So, as far as safety goes, I don't think there's going to be a safety issue. As far as use for these school buses, it's on the other side of the street, it's not on my side of the street. And the other issue was Peters Heat Street, Peters Heat Treat industrial facility. Yes, it's been there for a long time, yes, there's still a sidewalk. I'm not going to say that there aren't trucks that pull in and out occasionally, but there are, but children are using that sidewalk anyway to get their bus stop. So, I don't think it would be creating an uncontrolled crossing. The stretch of sidewalk that it's eliminating is rarely used now. I think if the, the other residents on the block were utilizing it, they would have perhaps not written or signed off on those affidavits. And nobody, but myself and Mr. Johnson and the representative from the Tribune was at the public meeting as well. So, I ask you to look at it in a practical sense and a reasonable sense. My quotes to fix this, now we'll hearken back to your bond things. Bad act to follow when you're trying to sell money yourself. It's over eight thousand dollars to replace the stretch of sidewalk.
How much sidewalk are we talking about?
We're talking about. Two hundred and three feet.
Okay.
You're talking down Race Street, right?
On the Race Street.
I was talking Lincoln Avenue.
Not talking Lincoln Avenue, no, I just replaced those.
I saw you put some of it out on Lincoln.
Yeah, I just replaced some of those.
I, I own the school building.
Oh, okay.
So, I have a lot of.
Well, you know, and, and I wouldn't be here if the school was a school. You know, kids were going there, I mean, it would be.
It isn't just school kids that use the sidewalks, there's a lot of people that walk down it, they're worried, they cross the bridge constantly.
Oh, I understand that.
I mean, I, I just saw a woman, I almost stopped, picked her up, she was carrying her laundry to go to Lucy's, and I watched her going.
Well.
So, I mean, so I know that they, they do use it a lot. I know what you're saying, there's a lot of worse sidewalk than the ones you show, that you're looking at, the one that you're being told to replace. Peters is closing, they told me the other one, start taking my stuff down to West Mead. But, I mean, they've been moving equipment out.
Yeah, I heard they were going to move.
They are, they're moving out now.
Sure. And, and I don't know how, how long it's going to take to fill that, you know? Or if they haven't sold, or what they're doing with it, but there's not going to be any traffic when they move.
As far as like you're saying it, there ain't enough, I mean, we put those ramps everywhere on the corners.
Hmm.
And, I mean, there isn't a whole lot of wheelchairs in the fifth ward.
No, but that does, you know, I'm sensitive to that too, that doesn't mean that there won't be later. And, and.
Yes.
I, I've got, on that corner, where the curb cut is, if you will, for the wheelchairs' access, I think I have six slams, separate pieces of sidewalk, that would go past the deck on the house that I have. And I, I would plan on replacing those merely because you can go left or right a little bit, and face it, if I've got tenants, I don't want to walk in, you know, have them walk over a, a decent sidewalk rather than, and, and actually, I think three out of those six pads are fine anyway. There's a corner taken out of one of them, which just walking around the block, you'll find where sidewalks. But I thought I was going to do that anyway. But, there's twenty-four in total to replace, if you count them all. And it's, it's a big job. It's a big job. And I just don't see the overall benefit.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Not Chris, but it's our staff. The county owns a vacant lot across from Lincoln Avenue Grocers. The redevelopment authority just bought a lot on Wattsworth Avenue. They're almost all fifty by two hundred lots. If the sidewalks on those lots were in bad repair, would we force the county, which means we would pay for it ourselves and lean the property, or would we force redevelopment to pave, repave the sidewalks that cost us several thousand dollars, when the lot basically sold for seven hundred dollars? What would we do?
I would argue that in fairness and enforcement, equal enforcement, we would enforce and, and abate as necessary.
Which would add seventeen thousand dollars to our deficit.
It could, I, I would point out to council that there's a larger policy in terms of citywide walkability, connectivity, setting precedent, there's miles upon miles of sidewalk in the city. I, I would caution you to think about how you would handle other situations in the event that.
Didn't somebody else have to fix theirs, you know, over there?
Oh, we.
I fixed some of them.
We were, yeah.
I already did.
Were there other?
I did, uh, what, four to five pads, I think, I replaced.
But there were other folks.
Sure.
Didn't this come up?
I agree.
I, I would worry, like you said, that we can review other instances.
I'd like, I'd like to have this take some time. I mean, I understand this ruling, but I think we do need to have a consistent policy, and that's not something we're going to develop tonight. Because we have a whole map of where sidewalks are in the city and where they don't need to be, or not required to be.
Yours goes into no sidewalk, that sidewalk you want to take out, it stops, isn't it?
No, there, that alleyway then to Columbia has a sidewalk. And then on the opposite side of Columbia, I think there's three pads, and then somebody's driveway, then it stops. It, it technically is a dead-end street.
Race Street, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought, it's pretty much a dead end now.
Yes.
I don't know, just a little bit of traffic going in there, but.
Right, now, I know, not to interrupt, but I, I know the, where the old Race Street Lumber was, there are some apartments down.
And who lives in AA's apartments and Abenanza's over there? I, I don't.
Wait, names of people?
No, I mean, do, do they have kids?
Well, that's what I mean, I wasn't able to determine whether there were any children down there or not, and Hubbard, the folks at Hubbard indicated to me that they didn't know where the one child came from that signed up for that corner, on the elementary side. But he did believe that most of the high school kids were on Wattsworth, which was, you know, over near French Grup and walked up. But, I, when he gave me those numbers, I was more concerned about the declining population in that neighborhood, especially young people. I mean, there's, there's nobody taking the bus. I think that's a concern.
And that's probably consistent throughout the city.
Yeah, well.
I think it is.
People with kids, you know.
Yeah, well, we have a whole ward with thirty-eight children using the bus. Well, that could potentially use the bus.
What did you say your expense on that made?
Over eight thousand dollars.
That's a pretty good price.
Well, thanks. You think I should take it? Well, you want to come out and help, we'll knock that price down.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, so, it's been a discussion slash motion, so.
I don't know, are we really ready to have a motion on this? Or do we need to think about a firm, fair, consistent policy that covers all the sidewalk owners in town? Because, no matter how we decide tonight, you're going to have ten more people coming to us. We might as well have a firm, fair, consistent policy.
We already have that in place.
We have a policy that's, that is in place, and that, this petition is in, in, under that policy.
Right, but economically, for the people, it makes no sense. If, if you're spending eight or nine, I, I calculated close to ten thousand.
That's what I had.
For two hundred feet of sidewalk. But, if you're talking about ten thousand dollars for two hundred feet of sidewalk on a house that may be worth fifteen thousand dollars, I'm not saying yours isn't, is or isn't, but there are homes in that area who, which would sell for ten to fifteen thousand dollars. If you make them put a ten thousand dollar sidewalk in, they'll never recoup it. That's disentithic.
I'll, I'll never, I'll, I'll never recoup this with the property that, no. Oh, and the reason why I come to eight is I'm doing the removal myself, and getting rid of the debris and, and all that kind of stuff. So.
What's the pleasure of the council?
So, the, just procedurally, what you have is you have a staff recom, you have Attorney Brody's petition, you have staff's recommendation to deny, right? I don't, I'm not sure I heard a motion unless I missed it, but your options, you have three options right now. You could, there could be a motion to deny Attorney Brody's petition to remove sidewalk, right? There could be, actually, our ordinance requires if you were going to approve his petition to allow him to remove that, we have to do it as a resolution, so I would help you word that right now if you want to do it, or in the future. Or you can do nothing right now. Our ordinance requires property owners, our buddy property owners to repair sidewalks. So, you could keep this in abeyance while council considers it, certainly. You could hold off on enforcing in this one instance. There would be others, though, that would come up as well, I mean, there's, there's pending sidewalk repairs going on all over the city right now, actually, so that gets a little complicated. So, so council would have to give staff direction if it's, we're holding off for a little while, or we're holding off for a long period. Right now, there's probably a citation out there, is that right?
Did you get a notice for that?
I didn't get a notice, no.
So, what?
No, and I believe I didn't get a notice because I filed the petition.
Yeah, it was on Lincoln you got the notice.
Right, and that one.
Not on the Race Street side.
So, there's no enforcement petition pending with respect to this sidewalk? So, there's no order to enforce? He wants to abandon it.
Oh.
Not, not on the Race, there was an order, there was, there was.
There was an order.
Lincoln Avenue.
Right, and I got a permit.
Several properties.
I did.
But it didn't go down Race.
If I'm hearing you correctly, then you've already repaired the sidewalk that you were cited to repair. If I'm hearing you correctly, then you've already repaired the sidewalk that you were cited to repair. This one, this one, you're preemptoratively seeking to have permission to remove it.
Correct.
But there's no pending order requiring you to repair.
No, because this has gotta be decided first. That was my thought when I was told that if I petitioned to remove, I wouldn't have to go through with the work and have the board decide whether or not it had to be removed. Or wasn't allowed to be removed from the town.
Well, economically, it makes no sense.
Correct.
But I don't think we can consider that. You know, I think the bigger picture is that where do we want sidewalks? You know, I don't care what they cost. If we need a sidewalk that goes from Lincoln Avenue to whatever that alley is, then we need a sidewalk, or we don't need a sidewalk, you know? I mean, I haven't had, I haven't seen any evidence that we need a sidewalk here. But I haven't, on the other side, you haven't convinced me that an existing sidewalk doesn't get used, you know? I see all over town, I see sidewalks, you know, that are in this part of the street and then maybe the next block, there's no sidewalks, you know? And that's okay, but I think our policy for as long as I can remember is that if there's a sidewalk, it has to be maintained. And I've never heard of an abandonment. Have we had that before?
Yeah, we've had it.
Some places.
Typically in a dead-end situation. There's two that I can specifically remember, and I believe the third one in my time here, but all three of them either were dead-end or orphaned. So they either went to and stopped mid-block. It was up on Upper Park Avenue. I specifically remember two there.
Yeah, I remember now. We talked about that, yeah.
And there was one other one I just can't frankly remember, and I think it was orphaned. I think it was, there was no connectivity on either side. And those were granted.
Just to go back to, so we all understand the procedural stance, including myself, right? If there was a motion that passed to deny Attorney Brody's petition to remove the sidewalk, tomorrow, there's no pending order to have that replaced or repaired. So the $8,000 potential expense is a hypothetical expense if he was cited based on our sidewalk enforcement. Which is uniform throughout the city, right? But we know that there are, there may be worst cases, but that's a different, that's a different subject than what we have.
Correct.
Right now.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I move we table this, Your Honor.
I'll second that.
So to be clear for the city manager and solicitor, we're just taking no action on the petition, no action on the denial, and tabling action altogether?
I think this needs more study.
Okay, give your staff direction on more study then.
Down in Fifth Ward, I went and looked at your sidewalk. My sidewalk happens to be pretty good, but I have some that aren't perfect too. But I'm like, being around the school building, those kids gather. They come around there, there's the playground there. Obviously, we're gonna have to always keep a sidewalk. There's some that is really, really bad, and it could be county-owned because there is so much property down there that's owned by the county.
Well, yes. I remember when there was a lot of foot traffic on there. There was a school there, not your school, there was a school, Race Street Lumber.
Yeah.
Yeah, and...
Oh, really?
There were, yeah.
So what about it? Was it actually head start schooling?
But anyway, that was 50 years ago. You know, it wasn't last year.
Sure.
It was a long time ago. And that street used to go across the creek and come up on Dunham Road.
Right, there was a bridge down there.
And, yeah, okay. Two big things changed. It's not exactly a dead-end street, but it doesn't go anywhere. You know, it's not a through street that has a lot of foot traffic or a lot of traffic, period. You know, people go to that machine shop down there where Race Street Lumber used to be. And I don't know, is there like a garage or something mechanic?
It's not there anymore.
Not there anymore. But, you know...
AA's in the back of the big building and starlights across the street when Race Street...
Oh, okay, so if there's a little bit of traffic, if that were, if that were just starting today, you know, that street would not have had a sidewalk, you know? That is not, well, it may have when the school was over there, people walked to school. But there would be probably no reason for anybody to put a sidewalk in the first place under today's conditions. So, but again, we're caught in that issue where, you know, people sometimes need to get, you know... Just because there's a sidewalk on the other side of the street doesn't mean that people will use that, you know? And it isn't like, it's not a high hazard crossing Race Street, you know?
No, no, and that's why I indicate in the practical sense, I don't believe that neighborhood the way it is now is totally different than the neighborhood that you were describing before. And if we have seven children going to the opposite side of the street to catch the bus, then in the practical sense, they're walking up the other side of the street. They're not walking up my side of the street. And again, the woman who signed the affidavit indicated to me her son crosses the street where she is, and I think because it's less busy, and then walks up the street.
But I don't think number one talks about schoolchildren. Number one rationale is eliminating the sidewalk. We cut off direct sidewalk connectivity to Lincoln Avenue for residents on Columbia Avenue between Race Street and Kearney Avenue. And it looks like, there was a public hearing, it was held. There were people present at the hearing, and we were given a recommendation by our officer. So why aren't we acting on that? I guess I don't understand it.
Well, I was initially agreed with you on that exactly, except that now, you know, we have...
So every time somebody does a hearing, somebody can come forward and change the way...
Jim brought up a faulty policy. We probably may be our policy, isn't it?
One of the questions...
What, based on the value of the house?
Huh?
Based on the value of the house?
No, no.
You mean, people who have own houses have to fix their sidewalks in the city, maybe?
One of the questions that I have, we're talking students, so let's get beyond the students. So let's talk about somebody that's in a wheelchair bound that lives on Columbia Avenue. If they are on, and Chris, I'm gonna ask you this. So if you have somebody that's wheelchair bound on Columbia Avenue that needs to get to Race Street, I don't drive school bus there, that's not my route. On the opposite side where the plan is, if I'm not mistaken, is there handicapped accessible ramps that get crossed? So that person in a wheelchair could actually go from Columbia Avenue across Race Street and then up in front of the, what's the name of the business? I can't even remember it tonight.
Petersons.
Petersons, correct? I mean, is that all handicapped accessible all the way up there?
Peters Heat Street ends at the same alley that my property ends at, just on the opposite side of the street.
Okay.
And then there is some sidewalk after that with a cut. And then Columbia Avenue is the next intersection.
Oh, so there's an alley that ends your property then?
Correct.
Okay, there's handicapped accessibility there for a wheelchair? If that's taken out, that's a dead end. Because you don't own the property down to Columbia. You only own down to that alley.
Correct. There's three or four residents between the end of my property and Columbia.
So my concern is if you have somebody wheelchair bound on Columbia coming out, they can't get across Race Street to the south side of it, then they would be going up and then all of a sudden come to a dead end because of an alley with no sidewalk to Race Street or Lincoln Avenue. Like, did I get that pictured right?
Yeah, I can put it up behind you.
I just want to make sure we, we don't, we put handicap ramps in and we went through thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to make it accessibility to our senior citizens and those that are, that have a disability. I don't think...
This is Mr. Brody's property here. I think, Your Honor, the situation you were describing is that if someone from Columbia were in a wheelchair, they would, they would get to this alley and be a dead end to get to continue to Race, I'm sorry, to Lincoln. There are no ramps that would cross here. There does appear, just looking over at the aerial, looks appear to be an accessible crossing here. Turns out, these aerials...
That is a sidewalk, right?
Well, it appears to be. It appears to be in very poor shape. I don't know the current condition. These are obviously static photographs. But you could continue all the way this direction to Race Street.
So who owns the piece of property on the alley that, right there?
This is, this is Mr. Brody's property that goes all the way...
And that's all yours?
Goes all the way to the depth to the alley.
Okay.
Well, that looks like a continuous sidewalk.
This is, but if this weren't to go away, you would arrive here. I think the mayor's point, you'd be come down Columbia on a wheelchair, you'd come here and you'd have no further accessible route, you'd have no accessible crossing.
You know, we're talking Columbia. Let's just use our heads. If you have a handicapped person getting out here, he's either gonna go down, or she was gonna have to go down and cross here. We have no idea what the hell this is. So that person would come out even out of their home right here to come up with nowhere to go if you can't cross the street to go over there. Because this is the alley. Doesn't even appear to be a sidewalk there.
Parking lot.
Parking lot. So, I mean, I wanna make sure that we're looking at this not only from the student's point, but somebody that...
So the action, there was a motion to second the table.
To table. I'm not aware of a time requirement that the council has to act on this. There's actually a minimum, the way the law just says, where. So I believe you could table, just to, so we're clear.
Well, at the very least, I'd like to go over there and see what it is. I didn't realize that it was such a big issue. I probably would've done that by now, but...
I had never thought about how the sidewalks devalue the property. And I, maybe we should have some kind of, think about this a little more because...
In the budget session, your city manager could require $30,000 for a sidewalk consultant to do traffic counseling low and high volume streets and urban density, and we could come up with a new sidewalk plan citywide.
Well, Chris, it seems like we're gonna table this. So you have no legal action against you at this point, so you don't have to sweat that out. And council's gonna have to figure it out and let you know.
Well, I thank you for your time. All my opinions are in consideration.
We're gonna call before you leave that podium. You need to add something?
What I, I don't, what I have to research is can you table this forever? I'm anticipating you're tabling this for no action tonight, right? But we do have a petition pursuant to an ordinance by a taxpayer, property owner. So at some point, council has to act on that. You don't have to act on it tonight.
Actually, you don't have to put that timeframe in tonight.
Correct.
Okay. It just can't be forever.
Correct. So there's a motion to second.
Thanks for making our job that much more difficult.
Sorry about that.
Roll call.
Roa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Taglia? Angela Bittner?
I don't understand why we're tangling this. I really don't. But I don't know.
Sterns?
Aye.
Okay. Chris, thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, Katie, you better take this before this case...
Do you want to have...
We have more business.
Andy, do you want to add one, David?
We'll take one.
Mr. Brody? Can I get those affidavits? Mr. Brody, can I go, do you have them?
We have here a three-hour meeting.
Guys, we're not done with our meeting yet.
You're getting demoted there. This is the longest meeting we've had.
It is the longest.
Well, Nancy, that had about a half hour.
Okay, so we have a resolution, NAP subdivision number one.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas in accordance with the provisions of section 1559.02 of Article 1359, the Land Subdivision Regulations of the Meadville Municipal Code, the final plot for Porfilio and NAP subdivision number one, minor subdivisions submitted to the city as prepared by Ronald D. Baker, registered surveyor being a portion of assessment parcel numbers 3300-056-A-18, comma 19, comma 20, and 21, is hereby one, approved, and two, approved for recording. No public improvements guarantee is required because there are no public improvements planned or required by said land subdivision regulations.
All right. You're gonna take it?
I can take it.
You take it.
Are you going to motion on it? Some more discussion?
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
You're up.
All right, so this subdivision is at the northwest corner of Laird and Doty Avenues. I believe Council of Taglia will be very familiar with the...
Yes, I am.
Western property, western building. He actually built this?
Built two of them there.
You built two? That's correct. This is the eastern one. So essentially, all this is doing is shifting a property line. So we have it up on the screen behind you. It's probably the easiest way for me to explain it to you. Currently, there's a property line that runs parallel with Doty that separates the two subject properties, runs at a bit of an angle to Laird Avenue. And basically, what this is going to do is it's gonna change that property line to make it 90-degree perpendicular to Laird instead. And this is essentially to allow the western property owner on the left on the plot in front of you to be able to place a shed in the backyard up in this area on the northeast corner of that property without having to go on the neighbor's property with it. So it's really just shifting a property line between the two. There's no substantial change in acreage between either meets all the requirements of the subdivision land development ordinance and the zoning ordinance.
Planning commission's approved it.
Planning commission has approved it. County planning has looked at it as well.
So Porfilio's get Lot D and NAP's get Lot B?
Yeah, I believe. I don't have the numbers, but yes. Porfilio gets the northern triangle, NAP gets the southern triangle.
Oh, no, I think it's just the opposite. Oh, you mean, NAP's get the southern triangle?
Correct.
I don't think so.
I think this way is south, isn't it?
That's south is Laird Avenue, so NAP's should get the northern triangle.
Well, the current property line is the dotted, is this line here.
The current line is the dotted line or not the solid line?
Correct. Current is the dotted, I'm sorry. I should've shown that. The current line is the dotted line, the new line is going to be the solid line.
Okay.
Going more north-south.
Fine with it.
Yeah, I wish I'd done that 15 years ago. That works. I'm doing my job.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Roa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Taglia?
Aye.
Angela Bittner? Sterns?
Aye.
Councilmember's statements. Jim, we'll start with you.
Okay, I'll make it short. Now that winter is upon us, I would ask you to adopt a hydrant. There's nothing worse than having snow around a hydrant and having a fire and having everything frozen up. So if you have a hydrant close to you, hopefully you and your neighbors can shuttle out two or three feet around it so that firefighters can connect. The house you save might be your own. That's it, Your Honor.
Nancy?
I guess I'm just gonna say a couple of things about Jimmy Moore party, which is set for Saturday, December 14th at 11 o'clock. I've registered about 180 kids already. What I need is money, because it's hard to buy gifts for all those children without money. Started getting some checks in. The checks need to be payable to the Jimmy Moore Fund and can be sent to me at my home address, 379 Cole Drive. And we're gonna have cookies that day. I think I have about 30 dozen cookies so far. I'd like to have about 50 or 60 dozen. So anybody else that wants to contact me about making cookies? I have most of my volunteers lined up. Fire department's gonna stop over that day. I think that's, oh, yeah, I just, I really need to get some money in place so that I can start buying the gifts, so we can get word out on that to everybody so that I really, it's three weeks from Saturday, and it does take me time to buy that many gifts.
What about wrapping?
When wrapping gifts, I put them in big Christmas bags, so...
Oh, okay.
But I can't determine how many kids I can serve without knowing how much money I have. So food, everything else is taken care of that day. I think Jenny Steiger and some, anybody from the city who wants to volunteer, that's fine. Most of the same people. I think Jim's coming. And I have some people that used to be volunteers, they're recipients. They're taking care of the kitchen and that. They want to come back and they're bringing their children in to teach them what the experience is like. And so I want those people in place. I think it's nice that they are coming back to give their time like that. So, like I said, the main thing is to get the word out. Oh, and mittens and gloves, if the churches are starting to save those, they can call me and I'll pick them up. I cannot use the church until the Friday before. And I can't get in until that morning, and I think that's the day of our Christmas party, two other Christmas parties I'm supposed to go to. And so I will probably miss everything, but, and it's for the kids, so that's what it's all about. Thank you.
John?
I don't have anything to add tonight. Well, you know, have a good Thanksgiving and don't forget light up night.
Yeah. Sean?
Uh, that was a lot to take in, a really large, uh, agenda there tonight, thanks, Andy. And, uh, there's one thing that really stuck out to me, and it's this one statement here, is "I believe that Gary has the ability and motivation to become a city manager."
We might need one of these.
Terry Johnson.
I, I think I heard them question your ability to be able to make a-
I hear that, yeah.
You're welcome, Gary. I remember that one.
Okay, all right.
Okay, well, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Congratulations, oil city. Have to do that, it was a promise. Um, we're not done yet, guys, we still have a budget session to go through. So, uh, if I can have a motion to adjourn from our regular meeting?
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
Move. All, sorry, all, roll call.
Roa?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Taglia?
Aye.
Angela Bittner?
Sterns?
Aye.